Emily, are you all set to go?
I am.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Calling to order this evening, Tuesday, September 3, 2019, Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Bazemore, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wadiska?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Puntaiz. All right.
He's not coming this evening.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Who's getting credit for the second? It was a tie. Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Hearing none, it's adopted. All right, let's move right on to -- Mr. Fuller, do we have any petitions for items not on the agenda or?
We --
Ms. Bazemore, you're going to address that, I guess?
Yes.
Do we have any petitions not on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, great. All right, we have a big agenda this evening, so we're going to try to get through this as quick as we can. But the first item is the zoning text amendment, the tree commission name change recommendation.
Yes, so on this item, because the name is immortalized in the zoning code, it takes a zoning code text amendment to change it. So the recommendation tonight is that the planning commission recommend to the council, under Chapter 48 zoning, it be amended to change the name of the tree commission to the urban forestry commission.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any planning commissioner discussion on this point?
No, as the liaison to the tree commission, their rationale is very good and I fully support it.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. I want this to be a touchscreen. Okay, with seeing no discussion, this seems like a reasonable thing. It's their request, staff recommends it. Mr. Stevens thinks it's well rationalized. I am willing to entertain a motion to change the name.
It's a more modern term to describe what they do.
Yeah, I was going to say it's also aligned better with how the staff is noted, like there we have urban forestry department.
And also, I think they want to look at the whole tree issue as an ecology as a whole, as opposed to just one tree at a time, so.
See the forest for the trees.
Exactly, yes.
Good enough, good enough.
You just need to stop right there. Don't, you ended on a high note.
As good as it gets.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the planning commission recommend to city council that Chapter 48 zoning be amended to change the name of the tree commission to urban forestry commission.
Second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Bazemore, can you take a roll call vote?
Mr. Wadiska?
I'm sorry, hold on. Let me open this to the public before we take the vote. Does anybody from the public want to comment on the tree commission being changed to the urban forestry commission? All right, seeing none, I'm closing it to the public now. Please take the roll.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
All right, passed unanimously. Terrific. She wants to speak. Did I cut off your opportunity to speak on this? No? You're happy with the outcome?
We needed convincing over here.
Okay. I redid it, I apologize. I actually thought you were waiting for the next item, I'm sorry. My fault. We did not need convincing, it made sense. Okay, the next item is the Mary Riley Stiles library expansion. So this will take a little longer than that last issue. Getting a staff report?
This is the planning commission. With planning. This is a site plan application for the renovation and expansion of the existing library structure located at 120 North Virginia. This item is up for action tonight following a work session that occurred in July. Over the past few months, the city staff and the project team have worked diligently on the site plan and made improvements in the overall design and layout. With the current site plan application, is also requesting several waivers, including a waiver to eliminate the required 10-foot perimeter parking lot landscaping, a second waiver to eliminate the required 5 percent interior parking lot landscaping, and a modification for a parking reduction to provide 14 parking spaces of the required 64 spaces. Staff has reviewed the latest submission and identified several minor items to address following the planning commission action tonight. These items are listed both in the staff comments letter and attachment 7 of the staff report and the proposed motion on the cover page. The latest plan is in conformance with the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. Based on staff review, the requested waivers are also reasonable, given the existing non-conforming parking lot conditions and the small size of the site. The applicant has submitted a transportation demand management plan to support their parking reduction. In staff's opinion, the TDM and the availability of public on-street parking nearby provide for a strong argument in favor of the requested reduction. Additionally, staff requests the planning commission's guidance on two items listed on Page 4 of the staff report. The first one is the irrigation system versus lead points. The city arbist, who's in the audience if we have any further questions on this, recommends a permanent irrigation systems for all tree planters on-site. According to the applicant, doing so will cause the project to lose lead irrigation points, targeting water reduction. While several options were explored, the applicant and the city arbists were not able to come to an agreement. The second item we'd like the planning commission's feedback is the corner entrance design. The applicant has provided an alternate design for the corner that includes a tree planter with seating wall, which is provided in Attachment 3 of the staff report. While this design would provide shade and additional seating, staff feels the design would leave limited space for pedestrian movement. Staff host of the planning commission can also weigh in on this second topic. Finally, staff recommends approval of the site plan application and modification waivers requested with the proposed conditions listed under the motion. I believe the project team is here and Mr. Eduardo will be presenting. If you have any questions for staff, I'm happy to take them. If not, I'll defer to their presentation.
All right, thank you, yeah. Let's hear from the applicant. Is there a formal presentation? Oh, okay, got it, it's up on the screen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eduardo Soto and I represent BKB Group. We are the architects of the project. And I'm just going to do a very brief presentation about the improvements that we're doing to the street scape in front of the library. For those who might be unfamiliar with the project, we are providing 6,600 square feet of additional space for the growing needs of the library. And these are located in two different levels along North Virginia Avenue and Park Avenue, with a iconic entrance at the intersection of those two streets. As you can see in this rendering, we're trying to match the colonial style of the original building, and at the same time trying to create a point of interest for the city and to pedestrians and all the traffic. So this is the elevation of North Virginia. This one is the one for Park Avenue, this right here. And we have prepared these three different images at different scales to show what the different components of the street scape are. This is what we are proposing, starting on top, just for to orient yourself. This will be the space of the library and we're showing only the corner in this plan. So parking for the library will be on the east side. We are providing, changing the concrete sidewalk by with pavers. As you can see here, the entrance of the library is here at the corner. You can access it through a ramp, ADA accessible ramp, or stairs. At the same time, we are providing three new vehicle parking spaces, two of them accessible and one standard. Also, we are providing a seating wall here, which serves also as a ramp to try to work the difference in levels of the site, which is the most difficult part of the exterior of the project. From the northeast point of the project to the southwest, there's a difference of about three feet high. So we are trying to make it accessible, but at the same time providing the necessary curb cuts for the ADA. So all the things that we're providing are flush planters, which were mentioned before. My understanding is that we, although those are outside of the property line of the project, they can be irrigated without compromising our lead requirements. We're providing a medallion, masonry medallion with cast letters as an art piece. And as required on the city guidelines, we're also providing benches, power poles, bike racks, and trash and recycle receptacles. This green portion at the northeast part of the project, it's a bio-retention facility. That is, the purpose of that one is to remove the phosphorus from water before entering the stormwater management system of the city. And my understanding is that that facility has to be enclosed in concrete so that water doesn't seep into the lower part of the building before it enters the system. You can see here the perspective view showing how the ramp and the stairs work on the corner, and you can also see this raised planter. These are the elevations showing how the existing part of the building works with the new addition. On this side, almost everything in the facade is a new addition, as well as in the back. In the back, there's no additional construction. And we also prepare a series of site sections to show the footprint of the mechanical units located on the roof of the building, so that you can see that the view is minimum from different parts of the site. As you can see here, Section A showing from the other side of the street, it's almost invisible, the mechanical unit. Once you're farther away, I think the terrain is a little bit higher, so you will be able to see a little bit, but not much. And that's the end of the presentation. If somebody has questions, I will be happy to take them.
All right, thank you. Do we, anybody have comments or questions they want to ask? Twice.
Would you mind just clarifying what you said in your presentation just now about the impact of irrigation and the planters on your lead points?
My understanding is that since they are, the water needed for the irrigation of those plants will affect a lead, our lead requirements, but I was told that in this case, there's an arrangement so that the planters can be irrigated without counting towards the requirements of lead.
Doesn't seem to make sense. If you weren't going to have the irrigation system, and also assuming that you were vigilant about watering them, you're going to use the same amount of water either way?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
We're going to use the same amount of water, or approximately the same amount of water, either way. Either if you irrigate with a hose manually, or you do with a mechanical system. So I was just trying to, I was puzzled when I first read that it was going to affect the lead score because of.
No, it's not going to affect.
No, but because of water minimization. The water minimization part didn't make sense to me. But anyway, you've clarified it and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, are we asked to weigh in on that tree planter?
Yeah, I mean, that's a question I have, for sure.
Whose idea is that? Who likes it? Who doesn't like it? What are the pros and cons?
Can we put up the slide that shows that corner? I think that's the focus of the.
I was also curious about why, I mean, did we add it so we could get another tree? Is that basically what it was added for? Yeah.
Just the one tree.
Just that one tree.
The planter in the corner. In the alternate concept, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, we were just curious, like.
From the staff memo.
Like, why the planter was added? What was the purpose?
You're talking about this one here?
Did we need another tree?
This one here?
I think so. That's the one I understand it to be.
No, there's one in the middle.
There's a, you don't have it in your presentation.
Right. But it was a part of the submission?
The staff memo.
So your question is why we don't have to?
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess the staff was asked us to think about if that having a planter with a tree there would cause problems with access for pedestrians.
Yes. The reason for having that ramp where that planter used to be is that we're trying to manage the different levels on the side. Maybe from looking at a plan drawing, it's difficult to realize, but there's a three feet difference between the upper part and the lower part. And in order to make a, you know, experience that is accessible for everyone, it has been very challenging. So we tried different ways with raised planters and different levels, but at the end, trying to use the flush planters, the only solution that we can find was to place that seating ramp there, so that you can manage, if you are coming from these steps and you want to go down, you don't have such a steep slope.
So are we saying now that the alternative plan to put a planter on that corner is no longer going to happen?
We still have a planter, but it's not as, it's not in the same place as.
Oh, so, okay.
So this part here is a planter, it's a raised planter. You can see here.
Can we pull up the slides with the alternate concept attachment?
That's been three from our packet.
Yeah.
Corner option one and corner option two.
I'm confused now.
Yeah, I need to be oriented here, for sure.
So this is, this is Attachment 3, and this is different than what we were seeing in
that presentation. So this one, as you know, is is option one.
Yeah, this portion is different.
Right. So this is the one that you are recommending, or you're not?
No, 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 we are recommending the one before, the one I presented.
Is that option two, it's just the next page down? Concept, corner concept two?
Yes.
So this is the one you're recommending?
Yes.
And this is the one staff likes?
Yeah, that's the question, staff likes option two.
Yeah, it's not just a matter of liking, we don't think there's enough room to, yeah, have the tree planter and still provide.
This is the one that doesn't have the tree at the bottom corner, so it's not the one we're recommending.
Well, yeah, so what we're recommending is in Eduardo's presentation, that has the corner planter at the curb extension, but does not have the planter at the corner right in front of that seating wall. So there are two planters, but what we were asking for the planning commission to weigh in is the corner planter, which now, based on what Eduardo's saying, is no longer considered under the application.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah. So just to orient you, Eduardo.
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
I'm not following.
Okay, so at some point, there were two concepts considered for the corner design. One, does not include the, what you're showing in your presentation does not include the planter at the corner.
Right.
And we're not talking about the planter at the curb on the bottom. The second one had a large planter at the corner, tree planter. In addition to that, the seating wall on the inside and also on the outside. So we included in our staff report for the planning commission to weigh in between those two, and since we don't see it in your presentation, I'm assuming it's not under consideration. But the staff recommends the corner design that's in your presentation, which has the planter at the bottom of the curb extension. Is that still?
To be honest, the information I was giving was that this was the recommended one.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is that, does that answer your question? So it sounds like from the applicant, the corner planter that staff did not prefer because the inadequate circulation around is no longer under consideration, but the planter staff did request, which is at the corner of the bump out, is going to be included.
Can we go back to the slides and look at it one more time?
Yeah.
I don't think we have the slides.
I don't, I don't have the slide.
So that's in your presentation, the final?
Yes.
Can we see that?
Just.
Yep.
Okay, so with the pointer, the planter you're talking about, I mean, I think I know what it is, but let me just make, can you please point to it?
Do you look at three on your screen and then look at there so you can see them?
Yeah, no, I want to make sure that everybody understands, including myself.
Is the, the corner design that staff prefers? You slide up just a bit so we can see everything. That's okay.
I think we're finding each other great.
So we have the planter on the bottom here, corner planter, and then we have the one up top. We do not have the plant, large tree planter in the corner. This is, this is the corner design that staff prefers. Okay.
So the, the issue on the previous options had to do with the planters by the entrance. We've now shifted the discussion to the plant, to the tree pit or whatever, tree planting area by the bump out. So by the entrance, it's just this sort of L-shaped little garden, and there's nothing in front of the concrete ramp area, I guess.
That is correct. Yep.
And the planter that the staff had the major objection to because of there being enough space was the one in front of this concrete wall?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. So that has definitely been taken out. They've addressed that issue.
Yes.
Okay. And so now the discussion is the tree pit on the bump out on the, I guess that would be the west side.
Yeah, which we're, staff is fine with. Yep. As shown here, staff is fine with.
It looks more symmetrical, for sure.
Yep.
What was the original thinking to not have it in? Like, what, just?
Are you referring to?
No.
No.
The one at the bottom.
The very bottom.
This one here?
Nope, bottom.
Yeah.
That one wasn't in the last submission.
So on corner concept two, on the slides we were provided prior to this meeting, that did not exist. Now it's existing. And I just want to understand, staff seems to be okay with it, I just want to know what the rationale is.
I think the idea is just to make this, this entrance have more public space. As before, it was just cutting here, and I think the reason is just to frame the entrance better.
I think it does. I don't know if people have other comments about it.
Can you confirm if these tree pits along both streets are flush? Is that correct?
They're all flush.
Can you show the, so you were asking for our guidance, but you no longer want our guidance? Is that what's happening here?
What was presented to us were two concepts, one with the tree planter at the corner and one without. So we wanted the planning commission to weigh in on that because we heard a certain preference by email that the planning commission did like the, well, members of the planning commission did like that corner tree planter, and we wanted to staff provide our guidance in that we didn't think there were enough circulation room around the planter, but we wanted to bring both concepts to the planning commission. That's where we are. Yeah, but now it seems like the applicant's not even considering it. The second concept.
Can I just make sure, I got the vocabulary right here. On the one that we are removing, this sort of semi-circle area, what are we calling that? What's the word we're using for that? It's not on this slide, but it was in, it's corner option one. There's a semi-circle concrete sort of area that was going to have some planting. We keep calling things tree planters, and I feel like that's also a place where, has that got some other word that I need to know?
So that was the tree planter that was under discussion, which we wanted the planning commission's guidance on.
Okay, so now what are we calling the brown area?
That's just another tree planter.
Okay, that's why I'm confused, okay.
But we're not having any issues with it. Different locations.
Okay, both tree planters, the semi, the half-circle, semi-circle one, gone, and the one that's on the far west side by the bump out is in.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's all about location, location.
Got it. All right.
One other question?
Yeah.
Probably a silly question, but for the tree pit at the bump out, that is being planned to be planted with a tree, right? That's the intended vegetation there. Okay, thank you.
What, what tree? What does the plan show there now?
Forest.
What species of tree are we, are we putting there? The same, is it going?
They're listed as tupelo on the, on the submission.
I don't know what a tupelo, do we have a strong opinion about tupelos?
Black gum, same as tupelo.
They're native.
They're interested in my color.
The other microphone on the other side. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. The tree proposed by the library project is tupelo, which is the same tree as black gum. That was already approved by the city. That's an acceptable species. It's, it's a good native shade tree.
Terrific. You were not going to be denied your chance to speak tonight. Can you show me where the bike racks are on this?
Is there any way we can zoom in a little bit more in the image?
I think they're bike racks. I feel like there were.
Yeah, they are. They're, it's just that in plan view, they're just little lines.
Okay.
Located here? Is it here?
Oh, right there.
Oh, that's good.
So detail ASO 2 are the bike racks?
ASO 5.
O5.
Back on the corner.
And what's O2? What am I looking, what are those circles?
Oh, this.
I know of on the other side of that tree pit.
These are light.
A light, light, okay, all right. So ASO 5, so one, two, three, four. Are there four bike racks? Or are there others on the other side that I haven't?
Mr. Chair.
I believe there's one in this other corner.
Where? There are more, actually. That's not shown here, but there are two under that planter, right?
Yes, I actually see the ASO 5.
And then there are some on the other end where, adjacent to the entrance, on the, on the parking lot side.
Okay, so, so one, two, three, four. Are there four bike racks? Or are there others on the other side that I haven't?
Mr. Chair.
I believe there's one in this other corner.
Where? There are more, actually. That's not shown here, but there are two under that planter, right?
Yes, I actually see the ASO 5.
And then there are some on the other end where, adjacent to the entrance, on the, on the parking lot side.
Okay, so, so one, two, three, four, five, six, and then some on the other side, so maybe eight? Eight bike racks? Eight bikes?
There's a total of 14, I'm informed.
14?
Mm-hmm.
And how many do we have there currently? Because I think it's.
Three.
Yeah, I think it's really, when I ride my bike there, it has been tight.
And they're very old.
Located here? Is it here?
So, so detail ASO two are the bike racks?
A, ASO five.
O five.
O five.
Back on the corner.
And what's O two? What am I looking, what are those circles?
Oh, this.
I know on the other side of that tree pit.
These are light bulbs.
A light, light, okay, all right. So A, ASO five, so one, two, three, four. Are there four bike racks? Or are there others on the other side that I haven't?
Mr. Chair.
I believe there's one in this other corner.
Where? There are more, actually. That's not shown here, but there are two under that planter, right?
Yes, I, I actually see the ASO five.
And then there are some on the other end where, adjacent to the, the entrance, on the, on the parking lot side.
Okay, so, so one, two, three, four, five, six, and then some on the other side. So maybe eight? Eight bike racks? Eight bikes?
There's a total of fourteen, I'm informed.
Fourteen?
Mm-hmm.
And how many do we have there currently? Because I think it's?
Three.
Yeah, I think it's really, when I ride my bike there, it has been tight.
And they're very old.
And what's ASO three? Is that a bench?
Yes.
Okay. And the parking is remaining the same in the back of the library? No, no changes there? I know we're adding some spaces on the street side, but?
Yes.
Okay.
These are the other.
Oh, here's the, right, push planter. My, my recollection from the staff is that it was only this semi-circular tree planter was the big objection. Otherwise, there was no other issues, and I didn't see it with the, anything from the AAB either. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I mean, I, other than this, you know, question about this tree planter, I think it looks amazing. I think it looks really spectacular. I'm excited to see this. I think it keeps the architectural look that we have already. I think it is an iconic entrance, that was your word. I'm really pleased to see it. I, I think it's, does a nice job handling the difference in grade. I, I'm very, very excited about it.
Thank you.
Really a, a nice design after all the work that the committee and everybody's put into this, so I'm really pleased with it.
No, and I just want to say, I, I think the design is nice, and I, I was one of the people who liked the entrance being on the corner. I know some people did not like it. But I think it makes more sense because it kind of connects with the park across the street, which is a lot of people cross right there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's a lot of people who come from the park to the library and back and forth. I do want to, I, I do want to talk about some of our waivers here. I don't have a problem with the parking reduction. I, I am kind of sad that we are eliminating the required 10-foot perimeter parking landscape and the required 5% interior parking landscape. I mean, I, this was a property that currently has a good amount of green space here and there and plantings, and it really, it seems, other than the bio-retention area around it, that's it. That's all the green space we have now. Is that basically it? That green area?
Yes.
So it's, I, I think that for a city project, it's, it's a shame that we are not able to require, to provide the type of landscaping we should be providing. And so I do wonder sometimes, so now when you walk over there, to me, it's kind of inviting because there are plants, and you get to see things bloom in the summer, and, you know, my kids especially love some of the flowers that are on one side of the, the building. And I kind of wonder now if it's going to be a little stark, because there's just, you know. But hopefully the trees and the one planter in the corner make up for it, but I, I, and maybe, I mean, maybe going forward, we could have some kind of project where we put some movable planters here and there, and try to add some pollinator-type plants or something. But anyway, I just want to point out that, you know, while overall I like the project, I am kind of sad that we're not putting in the landscaping we should.
Last time we talked about this, there was some, on the same corner that we've been discussing, there was some power lines, some, a pole like right at the ramp. I don't see that on the drawings. Is that being handled in some way to address its unfortunate location?
Well, I know there are new light bulbs on the side, so maybe some of them have been redirected? You're talking about?
The challenge is current, the current site on that corner, there's a
Got it up, perfect.
Utility pole.
Utility pole, right.
That would end up being kind of in the middle of that bump out, and I've suggested it could go across the street.
Yep. My understanding is that's not happening until after the library project is constructed. That's supposed to happen with a, a future CIP project? Mr. Whitfield is here, Director of Public Works, he can speak to that point.
Yep, please.
Good evening. Mike Whitfield, Director of Public Works. We do have another project. The project is called Great Streets, and this is Park Avenue. It goes all the way from Washington all the way down to Virginia. And so we do have some conceptual plans that we created. We don't have a, an engineering firm on board to design it as of yet. It is in the works, and so what we had looked at is undergrounding of everything on Park Avenue. That was one of the first things that we're looking at on this project. So we haven't gotten to the design aspect, but the intent is to underground everything on Park Avenue.
So I guess, sorry. Nope. My question is going to be, will they be able to plant trees in that planter that's going to be underneath the power lines?
So when we underground the power lines, they'll go out on the road. They won't go in the sidewalk.
Well, I'm saying, it sounds like that's not happening until after this is happening. So initially, have very short trees in that.
So there's, there is one utility pole out there. It will not be relocated until we get to the Park Avenue project.
Yeah, so I guess that's my point, which is, it is what it is, but that tree planter next to the ADA space, I doubt you'll be able to put a tree in until they remove the power lines that are directly overhead. But I'm not a tree expert.
The trees are usually pretty young when they put them in.
Okay.
It might be fine.
You don't think the power company's going to chop them down the first time they come by?
Well, you never know about that.
Hopefully by the time it gets that big, we'll, we'll have the other project underway.
So I can see them on, you know, the satellite image here on my computer. Where exactly does it hit on this design? I'm not, do, do we know where those, that pole is? I mean, to me, it looks like it's right in the middle of the ramp. So I want to.
It's, it's going to be on the, yeah. Can you point to it, Eduardo?
Right there, general area.
It's on the site plan. It's on sheet. You can see it on sheet.
CO five?
Yeah, yeah, the, the site layout plan. You can see it. It's right to the west of the, that planter. Immediately to the west of it.
Where are you on the site plan? I'm sorry, because, because again, I'm looking at the satellite image, and it's right.
There we go. It's like right there.
Yep.
Right next to the planter. Good point. So not ideal, but I suppose, right, if there's a plan to eventually get rid of it, then.
Yeah, I think undergrounding is great. I, my previous recommendation is that the power lines could go to the other side of the street, which is probably a much cheaper solution than undergrounding. But if the ultimate goal is undergrounding, that's way better, so.
You'd probably rather plan the whole street in terms of what happens to the wires as opposed to take one pole and move it and then have to do all the rest of the planning around it than?
Yes, it'd be very difficult just to do one pole.
I'm, I'm just trying to bring up the site plan for myself, but I think. Anybody else have any questions while I look this up here? Yeah, not, not ideal. Yeah, so the site plan has the new planter, that, the one that was added in this presentation. So it's up to date at least. Okay. Oh, there you go, up on the screen.
You know, I'm looking at this. This pole is right at the corner.
No, I, on the satellite view, it is right there, but the bump out, that's what I was trying to look at the site plan. Look, I think the bump out basically takes it off, right off the, the corner.
I guess, it's still pretty close.
No, it's, I mean, it, currently, it's right there. There's no, there's no debate about that. But it goes back into the project because of the, the whole bump out.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's true about that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? All right, let me open it to the public then. Anyone have any comments they'd like to make on the library expansion site plan? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public. Any other comments before we make a motion on this? Is there anything else we want to suggest changing? I think I'm okay with this tree planter area. Okay. I will entertain a motion.
It's a long one.
Not like the other day, like, like the last meeting, that was. Not everybody all at once here. No, we're going to read this. Our fans, our viewers need to know.
I can make a motion if nobody else wants to.
That'd be great.
All right. I propose, whereas the planned expansion of the Mary Riley Stiles Library and related site improvements provide significant community benefits and achieves the essential objectives of the comprehensive plan, and whereas the planning commission finds approval of the site plan and the related waivers and modification is consistent with the objectives of Division VII Site Plans, Chapter forty-eight dash eleven thirty-seven, and whereas the requested waivers under the site plan would not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and whereas the Mary Riley Stiles is at the western end of the community's municipal campus, which also includes City Hall, the Community Center, Cherry Hill Park, and farmhouse, and the proposed improvements along Park Avenue as part of the city's Great Streets efforts, in coordination with the proposed transportation demand management and parking management techniques, offer a range of transportation options, and reduce the reliance on automobiles, provide the basis for the requested reduction in parking, and whereas the planning commission finds that the following requirements of zoning ordinance Section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one and Section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-two should be waived or modified as permitted by Section forty-eight dash eleven thirty-eight. Number one, Section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-one to eliminate the required 10-foot perimeter parking lot landscaping. Number two, Section forty-eight dash eleven eighty-two to eliminate the required 5% interior parking land, lot landscaping, and three, modification of Section forty-eight dash ten zero four for a parking reduction to provide 14 parking spaces instead of the required 64 spaces. Now, therefore, I move that the planning commission approves site plan application number twenty-eighteen dash eleven oh four and the modifications and waivers requested with the following conditions. Number one, an updated final site plan that addresses the staff comments, letter dated August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, must be submitted for review and approval by city staff. Two, the updated site plan must also include the following additional items: A, a raised driveway entrance level with the sidewalk on Park Avenue to be constructed by the applicant; B, a written commitment that the applicant will work with the adjacent property owner in the future for a raised driveway entrance level with the sidewalk along Virginia Avenue to be constructed by others; and C, the proposed streetlight closest to the entrance along Virginia Avenue will be relocated out of the pedestrian clear zone and closer to the curb. I further move, the planning commission requests that city staff explore and report on re-signing on-street parking along the three-hundred block of Park Avenue to provide for two-hour parking from nine AM to five PM, and that city staff report on options to advance the following improvements identified in the twenty-seventeen City Hall site plan, entry plaza into City Hall, entry plaza into Cherry Hill Park, updated crossings and crosswalks along the three-hundred block of Park Avenue. The end. Although I will say, I was a little unclear on that last part, and we didn't talk about it.
Did you, once you've finished the motion, we can have discussion.
I'm done with the motion. Thank you.
What would you like to discuss?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
What improvements to the City Hall site plan are we talking about? And we're just throwing in this motion, we're asking the staff to look into some stuff? This seems a little weird. I should have thought about that before I read the motion.
No, no, it's, it's, it's good that you read the motion, and we can discuss it now.
All right.
In general, what this is, is a future conversation. We're kind of setting forth some guidance for staff to have a future conversation as we move forward with public improvements in the Park Avenue and the, the city complex of the library, the Cherry Hill Park, City Hall as it wraps up, it's under temporary CO, to look at these items in, in that context overall. So it's, it's really sort of outline a future conversation that we're asking you to sort of initiate, so staff can then move forward and continue that conversation. That's the general. If you want to talk on the specifics, we could talk a little further on that.
Sounds reasonable to me.
But does that relate to the site plan?
Yeah, no, it seems.
I mean, it all sounds great.
I don't mind providing that guidance.
Especially because this is a city project that we're building ourselves. Do we need to tell staff to have a conversation with itself in the future about those things as part of the site plan? Or can you just, we just trust you to do it? I mean, it just seems strange to, to put it as a, a part of a formal motion in the site plan capacity, right? The planning commission, we're the final decis, you know, the decision-making body. So, I mean, I, it just seems odd to me that we detach a condition that's kind of vague and telling city staff to talk, I guess, to other members of city staff about these items that are sort of tangentially related across the street. I mean, I, again, I don't see any harm in it, but I also don't see the need for it.
The Director of Planning drafted this to put these future conversations in context, and we were, we were looking to, you know, put this in writing, so as we go forward, we can go back and, and say, well, this is something the planning commission wanted us to look at. So we've kind of directed ourselves to look at this as well as other staff, so it's not just planning staff. As we look at these, you know, projects and final closeout and any improvements that'll, that'll be done, there were some items under the City Hall site plan that, that reference future actions that we will be looking at as we move forward. That's beyond the, the basics site plan, that approval. So I think it's just the whole context, and, and so, anyway, we were hoping to keep that in print.
Yeah, that's what I thought. When I read it, I realized it was really more kind of a note for something that needs to be done in the future. That's kind of codified by us, including it in our recommendation, and so I, I, I kind of got it, but you're right, in a way, it doesn't really connect with this. Yeah, because we could also have mentioned that, you know, we could add in that during the Great Streets project, that the pole would go away as well, if we wanted to add something like, another note like that.
Is, is, are these improvements entirely encapsulated in the two thousand seventeen City Hall plan, site plan?
Some of them are. The, the two-hour parking is something that we looked at with the TDMs on this project. So we see some interrelated items that are sort of coming out of it that we'd like to follow up on, so.
But I'm okay with leaving it.
I mean, it, it doesn't, it says explore and report on. I mean, it's not like this is problematic from a directive standpoint. It just seems to me to not fit. That's all. The rest of the motion deals specifically with what we're discussing in the site plan, and as Mr. Krasner said, it's, what does it have to do with the site plan? I'm not sure I, I see it. My view is to take it out, but there's a motion on the table and.
I would make a friendly amendment to, to delete that last paragraph. Again, I, I don't see that, I support the city staff exploring all those things. I think we've talked about many of those things before, and we'll continue to talk about them, but, yeah, I just think it, it kind of clutters up the motion, and since we're acting in a, in a final capacity here as opposed to making a recommendation to the council, I, I'd, I'd say it might be cleaner just to delete it. I'll make a friendly, a motion to amend the, the primary motion to, to delete that, and then.
Do you accept that friendly amendment?
Well, I will say, the two-hour parking seems relevant to the site plan. Seems to be.
Going to open that up. Some of us would like to see metered parking, but.
I'm saying, it seems to be, the other things seem pretty, I don't know, unrelated to me, the City Hall improvements, but it does seem like the two-hour parking is related to the TDM, which is part of this whole thing. But again, I assume you guys are going to do that, whether we put it in the mush or not, so. I don't feel strongly, I guess I should say. I generally like to give the staff what they want when it doesn't do any damage, but.
I think these are good things to explore, and why it's kind of awkward in this motion, I, I have no problem leaving it. I also have no problem taking it out if we want it.
Does that mean you do not accept the friendly amendment? I just want to know where we stand in the?
I'm trying to give Mr. Fuller a chance to like, say, come on, guys, it's silly, just leave it in there. What, does it matter that much? I mean, I'm happy to accept the friendly amendment. Paul's not here, what is he going to do? The teachers have not come to our meetings. The teachers have not come to our meetings.
He's tired, right?
I know, he's next door.
I know, he's working.
No, we, we had a conversation on this. He, he had drafted this language, so we, he briefed me on it earlier.
You can always make another motion some other time. So I'll accept the amendment.
Okay. Having the amendment having been, friendly amendment being accepted, do we have discussion on the new amendment? No. Okay. So, someone help me here. We take only now, since he accepted it, we're only gonna take a vote on the amended.
Right, he deleted.
He deleted. You've, you seconded the first amendment?
Yeah.
But, so now we had discussion, he's accepted it.
I was the seconder, and so I, since I made the, yeah, I obviously agreed, so that's the motion on the floor.
Got it.
What's printed with deleting the last paragraph?
All right. Seeing no discussion, let's take a roll call vote on the motion as read minus the final "I further move" paragraph.
Mr. Wodyska.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Peets.
Yes.
And Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
All right, terrific.
So does it make sense if we put together, like, does a statement that we agree with this, and we'd like for them to go ahead and explore this and not make it as part of the motion?
Well, we are now keeping very detailed minutes, so you can make a note that during the meeting, we are supportive of this concept, we just didn't include in the motion.
Yeah. I mean, I think the planning commission would like them to explore and report on on-street parking. We'd really like to have the really cool metered parking by app, like, because it's not that difficult to put that in place. And we don't really, you know, we wouldn't have to have someone driving around trying to do parking enforcement as much, so, anyway.
Okay, well, congratulations. Your site plan's approved. A lot of hard work.
Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. I'm excited about it. When do we get started? When does it open?
Groundbreaking is when?
Twelve to fourteen months before we start? Oh, when it opened. Okay. Is there a sense of when? That's a serious question, I guess, when, when we plan on, now you have site plan approval. Are we moving forward? Okay. All right, well, terrific. Next item is the Columbia Baptist variance recommendation. Everybody's gonna leave, they're not gonna hear all about the variance, it's exciting. But you're gonna watch it on TV, right? Okay. We getting a staff report on the Columbia Baptist variance? All right, great.
Yes. So the planning commission is requested to hold a public hearing tonight and consider and make a recommendation to the BZA on a variance application from Columbia Baptist Church as the applicant to allow a steeple height of one hundred twenty-five feet instead of the maximum permitted in the zoning code of seventy feet for the proposed church building located at one oh three West Columbia Street. This is in relation to the current site plan that will be before you for final consideration on October seventh. So we felt like this item was straightforward enough, we would leave this on the agenda for tonight as originally scheduled. So the BZA is scheduled to hear this item in terms of the variance on, at its September twelfth meeting. So you're asked to make a recommendation tonight. Staff recommends approval of the proposed motion. Staffs of the opinion that the requested variance should not have any negative impact on the adjacent properties, and that limiting the specific height would create challenges in providing architectural design that supports this church use and tradition of the church. And so, that's our staff report for this evening. There was criteria beginning on line eighty-six, six criteria that was evaluated in support of this variance by staff, but my summary summarizes sort of the resulting recommendation for the planning commission in that context. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's just, while I'm clear, we're just recommending the variance portion so that we can again vote on the site plan as a whole on October seventh. That's gonna include the issues we discussed at the work session this evening.
Yes.
So this is a small segment of the larger site plan, just associated with the height of the steeple.
Yes. It's the only variance they have associated with the site plan and with the BZA potential action in September, we thought we'd keep that on the agenda.
Okay. Are you going to make a?
I have some questions for staff.
Say something, or you're just there to answer questions for us?
Got it.
I have some questions for staff.
Okay.
Before we move forward. You know me and variances. Okay. Couple, a couple issues. I mean, I, you know, I don't have any problem with the steeple, but if you're gonna argue the variance, you gotta meet the standards in state code. Now, the BZA will decide. We're here to make a recommendation, but first of all, I have some questions about the height ordinance as it relates to steeples in the city. I mean, I know there's a lot of discussion here about how this compares to other steeples. When it comes down to a variance, it's really case by case, it's a lot specific. And I don't know the history behind those other steeples. I don't know how they were built, what year they were built, what was the Sydney ordinance, what was the city's ordinance when they were built? The existing steeple on the property, when was that built and what was allowed? If we're gonna talk about a variance, we need to really find that the applicants being precluded adequate use or reasonable use of their property, if they're denied this ability to go, I guess, from seventy up to a hundred and.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So, you know, I think there's, I think there are some findings that need to be made that are not made there. Now, the BZA will decide. I don't know what they're gonna decide. But I think that there are some items that are missing in justification. So, I mean, I don't know if staff knows, how long has our ordinance treated steeples this way? I mean, is it always, I guess it's kind of silent on it. Is it, are steeples even referred to or discussed in the ordinance when they're talking about building heights? Do we call out, like, projections like that off a roof, or do we just measure to the highest point?
So we're gonna take a look at that.
Okay. And then the other question would be, I don't know if anyone knows how the existing steeple, when it was constructed, and since that's already exceeding, right? The other one, the existing one is exceeding, is exceeding seventy, and so how did that get built? I mean, did it predate the ordinance? Is it grandfathered? Did it get a variance in the past? Those would all be germane questions, I think. Answers to those questions would be germane, I should say.
Well, if the steeple was constructed when the church was first constructed in nineteen oh nine, there probably wasn't.
Could be. Oh, that, then that definitely would be the case, but it doesn't seem that old to me. I don't know. Maybe, maybe it is. It didn't seem that it's that old of a steeple.
So the steeple was built in nineteen fifty-five.
Fifty-five. So we had an ordinance then. We had a zoning ordinance, maybe. And I know the ordinance has changed a little bit over the years, and so I don't know what it was at that time. But it'd be interesting to know, I mean, especially for the applicant to be able to present that history to the BZA, you know, in order to sort of show what was proved before, but even that being what, that's, that's the history. But now you're asking to, you know, as we all know, if there was a variance or if it was grandfathered, as soon as you change it, you lose any protection or right you had to that non-conforming structure under the code. So you no longer, so if you had, they currently have a right to keep what they have, but as soon as that goes away, you're kind of starting from scratch, and you have to make a new argument that, again, that the ordinance is precluding your reasonable use of the property. And I would argue that if the ordinance didn't allow, you know, any, anything above a thirty-foot roof line for a church, there might be some argument, you know, getting into, you know, the place of worship. But, but I don't know. So, I mean, I'd like the applicant to explain, you know, the desire to go from seventy to one twenty-five, what that extra fifty feet of height in the steeple, you know, what, the significance of that to the project, to the architecture, to the design, what it would mean if they were forced to build a by-right structure that didn't get the variance, what that might look like, and what hardship the applicant might bear. And those are all things that legally you need to justify if the BZA is to approve it. So, again, we're here to provide a recommendation to them, and so they'll be the deciders on this case, I suppose. But, I mean, these are all questions that, I used to be on the BZA, I'm very familiar with the BZA, and these are all questions I would certainly have if I was still on there, but now I'm here. And since we're here, and I still have them, since we're here to make a recommendation, so. In order, and it's not that I personally sort of disagree with the concept, but it's just in order to be able to say, okay, they meet the standards in state code and in city ordinance, and they're not being provided with some special favor, you know, they need to, I think, the due diligence needs to be done and provided. So. So that's kind of questions for staff and for the applicant in general. And I don't know the history of the other steeples in town, when, some of those are, a couple of those I know are old, but, you know, and how those were built, the one across the street, I don't know when that was built or how, or if it got any kind of special approval. Be interesting to know that. And again, the city ordinance perhaps should allow steeples to go taller, but we're not here to change the ordinance. Only city council can do that. So.
I can at least speak to the, what the code allows. It allows twenty-five feet above the building height, I believe, as a by-right steeple.
Okay. So that's where we're getting the seventy from.
Yeah, it's twenty-five feet.
Right.
It says, basically, the language says, may exceed the height limit in the zoning district no more than twenty-five feet.
Right. So I guess, right, so the question really becomes, if the church had to build that, you know, what's the hardship? If they're not, if you're not able to go, you want to go more than that, and so why? And if you're unable to do that, if you were precluded from doing that, what would be the hardship to you as the property owner? If you were not able to do that, and you were forced to build it as the code says.
Height allowed there?
So that's a question for, I guess, more for the applicant, I suppose, but, you know, there are other things I raised.
And I, I agree with you. I mean, when you go through and read what the code says for a variance, it talks about a hardship and having to show that there's a reason that this hardship needs to be alleviated.
Right.
And I, I guess I really didn't see it either. I mean, I don't see any reason why it needs to be more than seventy feet. And, but on the other hand, some of the other issues that come up, I don't think it is, is gonna provide a hardship to the neighbors.
Right.
I don't think it's, you know.
Yeah, I agree. And unfortunately, with the variance, you have to meet every standard. Like, I agree that it probably won't cause a huge detriment to anybody, but that alone isn't enough.
Yeah, I, I think if I was on the, if you're looking at it from a BZA perspective, I don't see how they prove that, that this is a hardship. I think the other issues they're okay with, but I don't think they proved it either, so I understand where you're coming from. I will say, though, for a lot of people, when you come in from, to the city from that side, coming in from Arlington, one of the things that you do see first is steeples. So it is kind of part of our gateway in a certain way, so. I mean, there is something said for that, but, yeah, they haven't proved that this is a hardship.
And, yeah, and I don't have any sort of personal objection to it from a design perspective. It's just, you know, the sort of, the law is the law, and the ordinance, maybe our ordinance should be more permissive, but it's not, and the city council adopted it. I mean, we, we have input into the ordinance. I don't know when the last time we looked at heights, building heights. It's probably been a long time. I don't know how long that provision's been like that, but, you know, we're kind of, the BZA is tasked with, you know, working with the ordinance that the council adopts, whether or not they agree with it or think it's good, bad, or otherwise. So, again, I'm not trying to dump a whole bunch of cold water on it, but I just want to make sure that the applicant meets their due diligence under the law. And, and that, so those are my questions. I mean, if I was gonna make a recommendation to the BZA, I'd want to make sure I'm telling them whether or not I feel that it meets the standards. So, simple as that.
If my comment was gonna be, I'm surprised you're missing this chance to beat out the Crossman height, you know, four feet. But on a serious note, would we ever, would it ever make sense for us, I mean, to me, it seems like we should change the ordinance, which we can't do, but we could suggest that city council at some point look at it, which they probably never would. But sometimes when I see these things, I'm sort of like, well, that seems fine. Why is the, why is the ordinance the way it is? It seems like we spend a lot of time going through these types of processes instead of just fixing the problem at the source, but.
Yeah, that section of the code, it's called, it's called the additional requirement section, and it's, there's a whole section of allowed height limits, so like, you know, I don't know. Like, roof structures aren't supposed to be more than twenty feet above the height of the, like, penthouses. And so it's a whole section that we could look at at some point if we wanted to.
So where do we go from here? I mean, I think your point is a valid one. I have no objection to it visually. I think it's actually quite a nice-looking structure, but if we're not meeting the requirement of the law under the variance, what's, what's the next step to staff to? How do we, how do we progress this forward?
Yes.
Without being in violation of our requirements?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, the, you're advisory to the BZA who has the authority to make the decision. So, you know, at this point, we could continue on with this item and take it to a vote, or we could ask the applicant to, you know, provide additional justification in the next month for October seventh and move this back to October for action, and then staff would look at their additional information in support of that.
And the BZA meets when?
They, they meet once a month, second Thursday.
So if we push it to, to October seventh, they're hearing it on the September twelfth, so they would be hearing it without our recommendation?
Oh, no.
Or they would push theirs?
They would not be able to act on it.
I mean, ultimately, the additional research, I think, would help with the BZA, who are the final decision-makers. But, I mean, that's kind of, ultimately, they will decide. And I'm raising this just, because I'm gonna raise it because I see it as an issue, but I'm just one person on this commission, which doesn't have the final say, so.
Well, we could also make a motion to essentially recommend against this unless this other information is provided to the BZA, or, I mean, ultimately, it's up to them whether we.
And it's, again, the BZA is gonna make, is a deliberative body, and they're gonna make, they're gonna deliberate on the facts and make a call, you know, and so it's not like, you know, sort of, I can sit here and say, absolutely, you don't meet it. I'm just giving you my opinion. But, yeah, so that's an option too, though, yeah. We could tell them that we have concerns that it's, this justification as provided, the letter of justification as provided does not, may not meet the required standards. I mean, that's how I view it. That's how I might craft something like that. And sort of put the, put them on notice that they need to take a close look at it.
If I could make one comment, I'm John Recknig, the architect, who's had this design out for years now, trying to get approval on everything. I guess my question is, is any steeple allowed? Can, in your mind, can you prove any hardship for a church just being a box and not a steeple? At what point do you say, well, the church can't function unless we get, and I guess that's where I'm going with this, is if you're saying, you know, you have.
Well, it sounds like they can be.
What hardship? What hardship? There is no hardship. This is aesthetic hardship.
It's for any variant, yeah, well, that's, maybe, maybe you're proving my, maybe you're proving my point. But there's no, for any variance, whether you're asking to encroach into a setback, whether you're asking to go higher for height, get more bulk, whether, whatever the variance may be, you know, the standards in state code, which, again, are, were actually recently, they've been amended a couple of times recently by the General Assembly, apply across the Commonwealth, and, I mean, you need to meet them. So, and the Virginia Supreme Court has made it clear over the years that if you, if you approve variance, if a locality approves a variance that doesn't meet the standards, you know, they're liable, so, for, to have it overturned. So it's, you know, I'm not saying that would happen here, but, but that, that has happened around, around the state. So, the issue is, is that, I don't know, I mean, that, that's, that's, then, then maybe it's an issue whether the ordinance needs to be amended, but we can't, in this position, sit here and, and change the zoning ordinance to allow you to build what you want to build. Sometimes the ordinance allows you to do something. If you don't like what the ordinance allows you to build, there is the variance option if you feel you're being, you're being denied adequate use of your property or there's been a practical hardship. Otherwise, the ordinance needs to be changed. The ordinance is adopted by the legis, by the council, and so that would be the other way. But, again, I'm not, I, I work with this issue frequently, so I'm very familiar with, with state law in this area, and I just, I mean, seventy-foot steeple is not, is still a steeple, seventy-foot, you know, it's, so it may be difficult to prove it under the, under that, but it doesn't mean the, and listen, it doesn't mean the BZA, I don't know how they would vote on it. I'm not, I'm not gonna pretend to know how those individuals will, will decide. They'll, they'll make a decision, but, but I just feel obliged to point out when I, where I see a, a lack of justification.
But, but if the steeple was seventy feet, there would be no variance needed, so, you know.
Right, and so what would that look like?
In this case, there are, a variance is needed because it's over seventy feet, and so that's what the code sets. And, so that's what the code sets, and we didn't set that code, that code was set sometime in the past, and, and I think it was a very good point. When was that code set? Maybe it was set after Christ Crossman steeple was built, because people felt that steeple was too large. You never really know why they did it.
And we're measuring, we're measuring on this plan, the height at the top of the cross, is that the right place to be measuring it versus the top of the, the steeple itself?
That 125 is the top of the cross.
Correct, I'm just saying, I mean, looking at this drawing, it's on the screen here, the top of the roof, the roof ridge is marked at 70 feet. And so, you know, if you put a cross on top of that, does that require a variance if that's, if, I appreciate you provided the, the height of the top of the cross, but if we get stuck on this, or if the BZA is looking for additional, do we measure to the top of the cross or the top of the roof, is I guess what my question is?
Code doesn't specify, it just says, the steeples can exceed no more than 25 feet above the height limit. It doesn't specify for it to, to measure, but maybe we can see if there are precedents in the past.
So to me, the steeple does not include a cross, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
I guess the question is, are you including in the cross the triangular piece that comes off the roof that the cross, it said not? Because the cross itself looks like it's only maybe 10 feet.
So are you, are people starting to say that the steeple ends there, and everything above it is the cross?
Well, that's what, I think that's what you were suggesting, but I don't think that part.
I don't know.
Between the roof and the, the cross is really part of the.
I mean, I guess, I don't know if the zoning administrator's ever made it, an interpretation on this issue, because I don't know how often we have new church construction, it's obviously, we only have a handful of, we have a handful of institutions, I don't know how often this, when's the last time this issue may have come up? If there's an interpretation that was made in the past that might provide guidance, but, I mean, you, certainly, you consult with the zoning administrator on how he would determine it. Ultimately, he'd be the one at the staff level, you know, statutorily, he, he's charged with making calls whenever there's any kind of gray area in the code. He would make a call. If he didn't like his call, you could appeal that to the BZA. But he'd make the call, I don't know what our standing practice is on that, it would be something that he would have, he or his predecessor would have determined, if it's not clear in the ordinance as, as adopted.
All right, I need some guidance, how to proceed. This, this has gotten, I, procedurally, I'm not sure where to, where to move here.
I mean, it's up to, I mean, it's kind of up to the applicant, I mean, we, if the applicant wants to take some more time to think about a justification, I mean, I don't know if there's anything unusual about the property, or the topography, or anything else. When I've seen height variances approved typically, it's, you know, sometimes there's an issue with topography, there are issues with other things that might, again, be a reason to try to justify that. I don't know, you know, if there's a good argument here or not, but it might be, it might be worthwhile to take a look at crafting something, or looking at some of the history of the ordinance and, and the history of this building when the previous steeple was constructed, and any kind of history there might be instructive and interesting to know as far as, you know, as far as this case goes, but, I mean, we're just here to make a recommendation, and I'm just one person, so I don't know what the, how, if we put this to a vote, I don't know what everyone else would do, but.
Your argument to me is very compelling. I mean, if, if it doesn't meet the, the rules of the variance and proving a hardship, I don't want to make a recommendation, even though I think it's actually quite an attractive design, so.
Right, I mean, I.
It's, it's, to me, a compelling argument, a compelling statement, and puts me in a position, I'm not sure how to address, as you said, to, as, to recommend it to the BZA with something that we don't think meets the, the laws of the variance, the requirements under the, of, under recommending a variance. What's the applicant's view at this point? Do we want us to make a recommendation that seems to be somewhat negative?
I guess I would say, we want to do whatever we need to do to follow whatever the regs are.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's pushing it off a month, I guess, it's, it's obviously frustrating that we've been through this process now for so long, and probably could have answered these questions several months ago if they'd come up, that, I guess that's the frustrating part for us. But we're, you know, we want to, we want to work with whatever you guys need us to work with, so.
Well, the site plan wasn't going to be voted on until next month, anyway, but the issue, it seems to me, is that the BZA won't address it prior to.
And then, and that's one of my questions, is if the BZA doesn't do it until October, does that mean you guys don't vote on this until November, and that pushes off another month?
We go before the BZA, yeah.
So you could still vote on the site plan before the BZA approves the height?
I, staff, I think so, I mean, if, if, so we could vote.
We could vote with an, if there was an option that was, didn't require a variance, I suppose, like, if they showed an option that was by right, we could approve a site plan that showed a by right height, and then if they, and then if they showed a second option that was predicated on getting ultimate BZA approval, I suppose, that might be okay, I don't know. If it's complicated, but.
A motion with the correct height and say that if they receive a variance, then the site plan could be amended for the steeple, but.
Right.
It would be more complicated.
So.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in a month with the site plan, if this, you could say it, you know, by right, height is, is what you're approving with the condition that the BZA approved the variance. The other thing that you mentioned earlier was, you don't really have to make a positive or negative recommendation, you could just make a recommendation, and the recommendation could, could say that a letter of justification may not meet the required standards, and, and you would, you know, say a statement like that that indicates that, you know, the BZA will just make the decision, but at this point, you're, you're saying the required standards may not be met, and that the BZA should ask for additional justification.
Is that a question that, could we go to them next Thursday, try to get some of that answered that you were bringing up? Them say, hey, this isn't enough information for us, come back in October? Or they could say, this answers enough of our questions?
Yeah, regardless of what, we, we have to say something, regardless of what we say, the BZA can make whatever decision they want. So we could tell them, hey, this is the worst thing ever, do not approve it, they could say, we don't care, it's fine with us. But we have to make some sort of recommendation.
What's, what's required by code is you need to make a recommendation, whether it's, you know, against or for, or just neutral, and, and indicating something along the line that additional justification may be needed to meet the required standards. And that could be your recommendation, and the BZA, a lot of times, the applicant will get enough feedback in the discussion, and the BZA will continue it another month if, if they see that, you know, it, it may not be something that they could approve as, as well. So there, Mr. Krasner has experienced that before, where the applicant will get the message that, you know, this is maybe not the, the night to vote on it, and to come back in a month, so.
So, I, I'm finding this whole thing a little bit tricky, because I don't have the level of experience with the code as Mr. Krasner does, but for me, logically speaking, and maybe logic doesn't relate to the law, but it seems like most people here are like, yeah, that looks good, and it's shorter than the one across the street, it's not that much taller than the one that's there now.
That's my view.
There's this pesky, pesky law that, that, that makes it hard to achieve. I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, what exactly, are, are you suggesting that no matter what they do, they may, because of the code, they may be unable to build this? Or are you saying, hey, look, this little letter where they compared to other things is sort of irrelevant, or their letter should have really been saying, like, hey, without this steeple this high, people are going to think we're a McDonald's and not a church, and it's just going to be like.
Yeah, I'm saying that, well, I'm saying two things, I think, one, yes, I think the justification needs to be made stronger, and it needs to really hit those standards, and, 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 and then, no, the, the BZA, again, has liberty to sort of interpret that justification and apply their own judgment to those standards and, and vote. But, you know, if it feels, if, if, it seems like the BZA wouldn't support it, I mean, yes, if there's such universal buy-in that our, our ordinance as it relates to steeples is, is not working, because there's an institution in the city that wants to build something that everyone thinks is great, but they can't do it, and maybe they, the city council, you know, needs to be lobbied to consider changing the ordinance to allow them to build a steeple at this height. If ever, all the steeples in town are non-conforming, now, I know you pointed out all the other steeples, if all the steeples in town are currently not meeting the ordinance, then maybe our ordinance is, is not, is, isn't working, and there's a good argument to be made for changing that. Now, granted, that obviously takes more time, and there's a process to.
Right, and that's where, yeah.
But there's enough buy-in to do it.
Sure, sure, and that's where, like, to me, on some level, I guess what I'm saying is, if there's, if it's a judgment call, like, their letter, letter does say, it will improve the visibility of the church and provide an appropriate visual statement that is in context with other churches, like, to me personally, that's compelling enough.
Right, but the variance standards are way more strict than that.
Well, except that, well, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, is what, what are those exact, maybe we need to have the city attorney come in and tell me.
Yeah, and there, well, Mr. Fuller does list the standards, I mean, you know, you have to show that there's a, either a condition, a physical condition of the property that, again, is, is resulting in the need for this, that there's, that if, if he's, if the applicant's precluded from being able to have this variance, that, again, they're being denied.
And that's one, that's a judgment call, and I might say, like, yeah, I think without a, a steeple this high, they're being denied, they're, that could be my judgment.
And, and the BZA could find that they meet it, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it with my own eyes and, and the way I see it, but.
Totally, and that, and that's where I'm trying to thread the needle of, I'm a law-abiding, abiding person, so I like the law, but if the law is questionable and there's judgment to be had, I'm.
Well, there's judgment on the standards, I mean, whether, you know, the fact that we, we all sit here and we maybe don't like the current zoning ordinance, the way it relates to steeples, I mean, that, again, is unfortunate, but we, you know, we're kind of dealt with.
I think, I think the real problem too is we don't know when that zoning code was altered or added, or. So maybe it was pa, after the Christ Crossman steeple was built.
Right, I'd be interested to know the history.
And, and actually, I mean, if you look at their study, they're only looking at four churches. The Presbyterian churches within code, the current code, but it was probably built before the code, because that, that part of the church is very old. It was built in 1800s, late 1800s, so, you know, so I, I think, like you said, some of the questions are, when was that code put in place?
Right, what was the reason for it, why?
Right, and what was the reason for it?
We could all think the code is silly, or it doesn't make any sense, but it was adopted by some city council who was elected and charged with adopting this for the, for the good of the city. There may have been a reason why they adopted that limit, and so we shouldn't just throw it out and say it's stupid or it's silly.
Absolutely not, right, that's why there's a variance process.
And no one's got to follow it, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, and that's why we're going through the variance process, and that's why I'm trying to figure out if you can thread the needle on this, so.
Yeah, and, and maybe the BZA can thread it, I just, I personally cannot thread that needle tonight for me, so, but that's just me.
So in terms of, you know, reading the code procedures on variance applications, it refers to, you know, distributing it to staff and eventually to the BZA for action. But it reads, the zoning administrator shall transmit a copy of the application to the planning commission, so the commission may send a recommendation to the board, which is the board of BZA, from the standpoint of any related master plan or other city planning considerations. So the context of the planning commission, while we've outlined the variance criteria for the hardship in there, because that's the BZA criteria, and so, you know, we, we included that in the report, but specifically, our code is referring to master plan and city planning considerations for the context of the planning commission and their recommendation to the BZA on variances. That's section 48 dash 173.
So, would, how do we feel if we take the current motion then? And, let's see, and we put it based on the comprehensive plan and design plans today? Like, like, we put it on, we basically put the language in that says that we are not looking at the code here?
I, I mean, for me, I feel like, again, any, any variance, you know, has to sort of not run contrary to the purpose and intent of the ordinance, or the purpose and intent of the master plan, and if we can't find that it meets, if I can't find that it meets the standards, to me, that would be contrary to the intent, you know, could, could, could hurt the intent of the ordinance.
So if the ordinance was passed, say, 50 years ago, is, and it, and it, we determine it's actually impossible to ever know the intent of the ordinance? How does that affect?
It's a bit like originalism.
But if it was 50 years ago, then both the Christ Crossman and the form, the current Columbia Baptist were built before it.
Right, but my point, my point is, as far as I know, when ordinances are passed, we don't, there's not some essay written about the.
Oh, there's notes, there's, there's minutes from that time period, because you can go back in five minutes usually.
Okay, but I'm, I've seen a lot of minutes that don't have some eloquent description for why an ordinance was passed, and so I'm just saying, if you determine, hey, we don't actually know why the ordinance was passed, then what did they do, did they add a law?
Well, again, that, that's a judgment call, as far as determining whether or not, well, it, it goes to the, it goes to the issue of whether or not granting the variance would cause a detriment that might, again, injure some other purpose of, you know, of, of, of the city's plans and ordinances. And, you know, so they're, they're all interrelated.
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, this, this, and this is not an insignificant variance, I mean, it's asking to go from 70 up to 125, so it's, it's going, it's not quite doubling it, but it's, you know, it's, it's kind of blowing what the current ordinance would allow someone to do, kind of saying, I want to go way over that. And so, again, I just have a little pause without trying to hear a really good reason why, you know, so.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be good for the plan, good for the comp plan, you know, intent, and good for the city zoning ordinance to allow someone to, to, to exceed a zoning ordinance adopted limit by like, you know, 80% or whatever they're looking at.
I think if we do decline this, I'd like to, on our next meeting, have an agenda item to review this specific ordinance, because I think it's silly to waste all this time, go through what seems to me to be pretty clear, like, an ordinance that we should change. So we should go ahead and do that next meeting.
We can certainly do that, yeah, if we feel that this, that isn't working, then yeah.
Push something else.
All right, how, how can we move this process? If we continue it to our next meeting, which, or the October 7th, not our next meeting, or the October 7th, how can we accomplish that without precluding the BZA from moving in the near term? I, I don't want to slow this process up, but I don't also want to put a recommendation from the BZA, which I think will be negative, because I, on its face, you know, visually, I have no problem with this, I don't think a lot of the people in the planning commission do, but if it has a issue with the, meeting the standards of the variance, that's a problem for me to recommend something that I don't, I have been convinced through this, this discussion that it doesn't. So how can we, I would like to assist the applicant here, but not provide, but continue it until October 7th, so we can get some more information on it. Is there a way to achieve that, that the BZA can move forward in some way without a recommendation?
No, the BZA would just have to reschedule the meeting to their, the item to their next meeting in October, and, and that's done. I mean, Mr. Krasner can, he has experience with that, and, you know, sometimes the applicant's, you know, not quite there on their application or whatever, so.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think, if the, if the applicant wants to sort of go to the BZA and hear what they have to say on the case, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I would, if I was making the motion and there was support for it, I would, I could make a motion saying that, that the planning commission has concerns that the, that the, that the current justification provided by the applicant is, you know, is meeting the, the standards, and therefore may not be consistent with the goals of the comp plan and the goals of the zoning ordinance. You know, I, I would, I would phrase something along those lines, that because, you know, we have concerns with that it, that it's just, that the variance is justified, that it may not, therefore, it may be contrary to the, to the goals of the comp plan. But something like along those lines, or just, or just simply say that we have concerns about the request, and, and not make a recommendation up or down. I don't know if we can do that, Mr. Fuller, if we have to, do we have to say yea or nay, or can we just?
No, what you could do is, is, is basically say what you just said, that the planning commission has concerns with current justification in meeting the standards of, you know, the zoning, the comp plan, the hardship, and that, you know, we're not making a recommendation at this point, and we're going to continue it for a month, and, and they, I think, to meet, Chairman, what DISCA's objectives, this item can remain on the BZA's agenda. The applicant can then discuss their case, and the BZA would continue it, because there's no recommendation, but at least that discussion and feedback would occur, and so when it comes back to us and the BZA, the applicant, who has really the burden to justify this request, and staff would have the task of, you know, exploring the history of, of this in the city, and so I think, you know, that, that would be a plausible way to proceed with this.
Mr. Krasner, when the BZA discusses these type of items with an applicant prior to making its determination, would it typically give guidance as to, this is going to be a problem, this is not going to be a problem, or they just get input and then determine on their own?
I mean, it depends, I mean, you know, when I was on the BZA, we would try to, if it appeared that we, there was enough concern that there weren't enough votes to support the request, we would try to make sure that the applicant was aware that we had concerns, and perhaps give them a chance for, either to redesign, or to, right, to go back and think about. right to go back and think about, uh, what they're asking for and, and potentially make, make a change. Obviously, we didn't have a case like this exactly. I don't think there were any other places of worship that came before the BZA when I was there, but, um, for example, like on a residential structure, if someone was asking for a variance to encroach into the side yard setback or the front yard setback, and we felt that what they were asking for, we either couldn't support, or they hadn't justified it, yeah, we would try to let them know that before we vote, you know, here's, here's an opportunity to, to, you know, maybe press the pause button and go back and think about it, and think about maybe making revisions. Um, that was in a residential context, but, right, something like that would happen, you know, routinely.
Uh, so, I'm going to ask the applicant one more time. Uh, we can, it sounds like we can craft some language that says we have concerns. Uh, and my fear is that we're prejudicing the BZA by making this kind of recommendation, or these kind of comments, and then now this becomes a larger issue that needs to be addressed. Much more, it, it's, it's more difficult for the BZA to just be like, we don't care about the variance requirements. Or we can just continue it to the seventh, have you get some input from the BZA, and then, I, I mean, my objective is to help you here, uh, because I don't see a problem with it, you know, visually and for the city, but I, as I've sort of said already, I don't need to repeat it, but I, I feel that I'm not able to recommend this based on what I'm hearing this evening.
And, and I think, based on what I'm hearing, that if we can still go ahead with the rest of the site plan somewhat, and that, that's my only worry, is that if we push this off into October for the BZA, then that pushes site plan approval vote from you into November.
Uh, we are, I mean, there's another meeting in October, maybe not, it would be right after the seventh. So, the seventh, and then I don't know what the next day is, but we have two meetings a month, and this is the first one, so I would suspect it could still be in October if we get some guidance, or you provide us some guidance based on your meeting with the BZA. So, I don't know if it pushes into November, but it, I think the quickest would be two weeks, and you know, we can try to get that on the agenda right away after we get that kind of input. This is not that complicated of an issue, I just think we need more justification, is what I'm hearing. Or, as you heard, we can make some, you know, kind of recommendation, non-recommendation.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I, you know, reading the six items that lay out the, the variance criteria, only the first one seems remotely questionable, and it seems like a judgment call. So, I, I'm still a little confused what research we would find that would then make Mr. Krasner think, like, this is totally legit for a variance. I mean, if we found out that the ordinance was passed for some reason, I don't, I don't, that's the part that I find confusing, like, I don't, I don't know what, it's unclear to me what we, what you guys could actually do that would, other than get city council to change the ordinance, that would make your application more qualified, if it mostly comes down to a judgment call as to whether or not the height is, um, is key to its usefulness of your property or whatever, that hardship question. Because things like it will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and nearby properties. I mean, I think what you've laid out here is, is, in this staff report, seems a sufficient explanation. Same thing about, uh, recurring nature, doesn't seem like this would create a recurring problem of giant steeples throughout the city. Anyway, I'm just saying, for me, the only real question is whether or not you can make a compelling case that, that having a seventy-foot-tall steeple would make your church less.
I think, I think, I can say one way. If they were to get the staff to figure out where the code, this current code was done, set, and if it turns out that it's set long enough ago that the Christ, um, Crossman steeple was built with this code in play, they could say that, you know, that creates an unfairness that this church got, was able to get a variance at that time, and we're not allowed to get a variance. Like, that, that's an example. I don't know.
Also, how hard is that to figure out? Can they look up, is it easy to look up and see if Crossman got a variance?
We should have those records, shouldn't we?
We should have them, and we should know when our code was changed, but I don't know.
We do have some records, and it's not the most complete records, but we can certainly take a look, um.
Does Manissa Code keep a record of changes we make, like, when we go in and change our code in that program?
Yeah, to some extent, we do.
It sounds like you're saying is, if, for example, the code existed, the Crossman Church tall steeple got built, then we're like, okay, this is probably cool, but if the Crossman steeple was built, then the code was adopted, we're like, nah, forget it, clearly. It's sixty years ago, somebody thought this was a bad idea.
The other reason why the history is important, the other reason, I mean, you know, again, I mean, the staff could uncover, there might be a prior zoning administrator determination floating around, related to one of those other churches that actually says, well, we're going to treat steeples differently. I don't know, there may be something in there that says, you know, that steeples are, we're going to measure them this way. There may be some other kind of nugget related to this that maybe, maybe been kind of lost to history, but could be very important. I mean, it hasn't come up that often, I know we.
In what way would that be important?
Well, because the zoning administrator's determination, if a previous zoning administrator made a formal determination that a church height should be measured a different way than, you know, um, because right now, the code is saying, well, it's saying that the projection can go fifty feet above. This, 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 does it specifically say steeple?
Yes, it says steeple.
Steeple is one of them. It's listed as one of them.
It's a bunch of things. It's, it's in a list of things, and so, the steeple is.
So, but for example, like, if they measured, like, where they, how they measured the steeple, if a previous zoning administrator said, well, we measured to like the top of the steeple, but the cross, we don't count. Or, I, I don't know what it would be. I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking of possibilities, but.
So, so whatever previous determination would be made would be applied to this case?
That's how zoning determinations work, right. Once the determination's made, in one instance, it would apply to any identical instance that.
A future zoning administrator can't make another.
They can undo it, but they'd have, but, but it's difficult. I mean, they can like undo it, but not easily, because that's the whole point, is that it's trying to treat everyone the same. People, treating people in the same situation the same. So, it'd be interesting to know how the other steeples were built, if they were all predating this ordinance change, and because there are a lot that are above it, so it's really strange. I mean, the more I thought about it, I said, why, I mean, most of the steeples are over, over that.
It's in a really interesting list. It says radio, or transmission towers, or mass, or necessary industrial utility, or public service structures and monuments, spires, belfries, steeples, flagpoles, commercial, public utility, wireless, mass, wired out tanks, and silos. I mean, that's the list, and then it basically says they may exceed the height limit in the zoning district no more than twenty-five feet. It doesn't talk about how you measure it, but, so it's in a whole list of things that.
And it doesn't call it places of worship per se, I, so I don't know if there's.
No, it's spires, belfries, and steeples, and a bunch of industrial stuff.
I guess spires and belfries sort of, sort of begins to sound like places of worship, but, you know, who knows? And so, it'd be interesting to know how those, the more recent, you know, churches that appear to exceed the, what's permitted, how, how they were built. Did they get a variance? I mean, what, or was the code changed more recently? I just don't know. So, all that is, would be interesting to.
I don't think we'll ever know, is my opinion. So, we'll be back to just.
I don't know that we will know. My view is that not only do we have to have some research to do on our end, but also it gives the applicant an, an opportunity to research what sort of hardships this could meet. I mean, these kind of steeples are built in jurisdictions all the time, and there may be other arguments that meet this requirement, maybe not in the city of Falls Church, but in the, in the state of Virginia, and we understand those hard, right now, we're, everybody's in the dark here. This, this sort of, to me, at least, came out of, you know, left field, and so. Well, it's a valid point, that's all.
But that's another good example you brought up. You could say, like, adjacent jurisdictions, Fairfax and Arlington, allow this much, and because the state of Falls Church is so different.
That would be relevant if we were looking at changing our own ordinance. It'd be instructive. It'd be interesting to look at what they do, I mean.
I'm just saying they would have to make a case for hardship.
I mean, typically, the hardship has to be property-specific. There has to be something unusual about the property that is driving this, something, usually something physical, you know, related to the property that's driving the need to, like, if there was like severe topography, and like this church was down in a gully, and the only way you'd see it would be like if they had an extra-tall steeple, because like there was a mountain in the way, or there was a hill.
Right, so, so based on that, it sounds like they will never meet that qualification. So, that's why I'm saying, like, we're sending them off on an impossible task, unless, like, there's, does, that little description makes it sound like you, you would never agree to a variance on this, because there's clearly not a physical.
Listen, I'm not a, and I'm not a zoning attorney either. I mean, there are issues, you know, there are you know, religious freedom issues. There are a lot of issues, zoning, there's a whole, uh, volume of law related to regulating religious uses, and even when it comes down to architecture. So, I'm not saying that it's impossible, but I'm saying that as far as, you know, how, how I see it, yeah.
All I'm trying to do is give you guys some advice, which is, it doesn't, unless you come up here with some sort of giant, high-paid lawyer, I'm guessing Brett's never going to support this.
Well, and the good news, and the good news is the BZA's voting on it, so.
You may just be rolling, you know, rolling dice either way, is just how I'm reading it.
I'm just one person. I don't want to speak for the group. I'm not speaking for the group.
I mostly don't like sending people on pointless efforts, so that's where I'm saying, like, you guys should make a judgment call. If you think you're going to sway Brett, go for it. If not, maybe just see what the rest of us are going to do, and it all comes down to what the BZA wants to do anyway, so, you know, what, Russ is trying to craft some sort of way of getting their vibe before we do stuff might be the smartest way forward, but I'm guessing he's a lost cause.
And, and he might, and he might be, but.
And I am as well, sorry.
Okay, it's fine.
At least currently.
I'm curious to hear what you think. My view currently is to continue it, so that we at least get more information on the city side and give the applicant an opportunity to address this concern. And if you come back and say, we've looked at it, and we're going to ride this, and give us your recommendation, planning commission, and let the BZA sort it out, um, I'll take that under advisement, but my view currently is, I think it's in everybody's best interest to continue it.
I think that's where we've come at this point, so.
Um, all right. Let's do that. I don't, do I, I, let's, let's just continue it, and, because we're, I want to move on to the other issues that we're actually going to talk to you for the next hour after this.
Do we need a motion to continue?
I think we need a motion to continue. So, can I get a motion to continue this to, uh, the October seventh meeting?
I move that we continue this to the October seventh meeting.
Second. Well-stated.
Second.
No reason to get along.
Do we need a roll call vote on a, do we need a roll call vote on a continuous? Let's take a, let's take a roll call vote on the continuous, just so we have no question about it.
Okay. Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Okay. Tim's fucking the trend.
I'm happy to explain why, but I think you're, you're in a good place, so I'm going to stop the train.
Okay, I'm going to move on then. Um, let's move to, uh, item six D, the approval of meeting minutes. This was, just as a overall comment, incredibly comprehensive. We have not seen minutes like this in quite a while.
Seen minutes at all.
Uh, I was very impressed, so thank you very much for doing that. Um, though I would say you may not need to do all of this work. Uh, in the future, I'm speaking for myself here, I don't need to see, because of the recording that we're doing, if you want to make this shorter, you can. That's my view of it. Does anybody have any comments about, uh, the, you bringing it up here, great? About the, uh, minutes from the August fifth meeting?
I was not present, so I will have same, but I will, I like capturing all the whereas, because I assume you just copy and paste that out of, you know, with minor tweaking if we make edits. But I generally have found the minutes that are very summary, like the legislative update, whatever the city council puts out, like literally the next morning, to me, is always like, oh, that's plenty of information. If there's something in there interesting, I go and watch the video and see the real thing, so, but this is great.
I mean, if, if it's a copy-paste exercise, and it didn't take you too much effort, then, fine, it's very, very comprehensive and complete. Any comments about anything that was written for the very few people that attended that meeting?
Did notice you referred to as mister.
I noticed that, too.
What line is that? Oh, in the, in the.
That can be corrected.
In the past, uh, Ms. Bazemore, we had line numbers, so we could say, hey, on line two thirty-seven, it referred to Mrs. Weiss's mister, so if you add that for future, that would be helpful, just that, so we don't have to be like, third page, second paragraph, you know, something like that. Uh, where were you referred to? We could, should correct that.
I don't know what line it was, but somewhere in the middle.
Somewhere, Mrs. Weiss was referred to as mister.
I think, I think it was the motion on the first one.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from someone who attended? That's Mr. Stevens or Mrs., or Mr. Weiss.
I make a motion to approve the Bennetts.
All right, can I get a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay. I'll get to you, hold on. Any nays? None? Any abstentions? Three abstentions. Uh, okay. All right, uh, Mr. Fuller, planning, oh, no, we're first going to do the planning commissioner reports before the planning directors' reports. Any planning commissioner reports, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I don't have any board and commission meetings, but, um, I attended last week the Governor Northam's and, uh, CEO of Dominion Energy, Tom Farrell's announcement on Dominion's plan to sponsor the financing of electric school buses for school districts throughout Virginia, and it was a very impressive, uh, forum, and, uh, the program will be one that the city can very much take advantage of. Uh, the buses, basically what Dominion is going to do is, is finance the difference in cost between a diesel bus and an electric bus. They're quite a bit more expensive than the diesel. Uh, so in effect, it makes it no difference in terms of the cost. Plus, they're going to provide financial assistance for the electric charging structures to charge the buses. So, it really is, uh, you know, excellent program. And, uh, there'd be a whole process laid out as to how the various school jurisdictions can apply for it, so. Our school people are very much engaged with this, and will, uh, do their best to take advantage of it.
Was there any talk of how the state could improve our acceptance of solar energy?
That would be in the legislative arena, and that comes up this fall.
Dominion.
Any other reports?
Solar Freedom, that's the.
Um, did we get a, uh, speaker slip while we were talking?
Was there a, what?
It's for the work session.
Tim, was there an EDC meeting the other morning?
Um, EDC, they did, but I don't recall that there was anything.
About the paving, anyway, I wasn't able to go, but.
No, uh, that is supposed to happen. You, you mean on, uh, oh, about the parking lots. Oh, yeah, they were kind of bragging about that.
Finally.
Yeah. Great.
Uh, okay, uh, let's move to the planning director's report.
Um, materials is the city manager's office reports quarterly to the city council on the status of CIP projects. So, we've attached a report that was presented to them on July fifteenth at their work session. And it summarizes the project status of the major CIP projects. Uh, so we thought that was, um, you know, informative, and notice there's a color coding in it. Um, blue is complete, green is on schedule, yellow is delayed, and red is not active, so it's kind of a visual way you can scan the project status. Um, secondly, also the manager's office is providing, uh, regular reports on the status of council's two-year program in terms of their work program, and so we're also sharing that attached report. And that was presented to the council on August twelfth recently, and it summarizes the successes and status of um, thirty-five, um, work plan items, uh, as indicated there. In the, um, adjacent room tonight, the council's having its work session, and one of the scheduled items we wanted to point out to you is the citizen advisory, um, committee on transportation, and the city council are discussing a, in a work session, a pilot program, um, option for electric scooters, which is the e-scooters and bikes, e-bikes of the city. And, uh, this is a relatively new mobility device, and we want to, uh, address it in the city. Um, action will be needed, um, due to a recent state legislation that requires municipalities to allow, uh, these operations in some regulated fashion by January one, or the basically default to the state, uh, version of it. Um, and so that's going on tonight, just wanted you to be aware of that. In terms of, uh, green infrastructure, with the recent flooding events, um, that have been highlighted, the community in need to revisit Stormwater Project and priorities, the council is, is, um, having discussions in regard to these, uh, items, uh, in the future, and, um, looking at the city's adopted, uh, twenty thirteen watershed management plan. This, this is also an opportunity to, um, um, look at green infrastructure, um, and to, you know, link. This is also an opportunity to look at green infrastructure and to, you know, link examples of green infrastructure and kind of starting the conversation beyond just the rainwater runoff and pipes that exist in the city and to a greater context as we move forward with this discussion. So we just included that as an informational item as well. So looking at the schedule for the upcoming planning commission meetings, we have September 16th. We have the community process for the mural or artwork that's contemplated for the site of the theater in Founder's Row. That's a process that would be initiated by the planning commission in terms of a site plan amendment. We talked about that during the original approval, and so that would come back to you on September 16th in a work session format, and so we could discuss that. And then we would talk about a process going forward that would involve, you know, fall into maybe the December months. And so we would outline that for you and have a discussion. And we'd also be involving the Arts and Humanities Council on that and possibly use them as a public outreach and some opportunities for public hearings through them. So we'll, we'll be outlining that, we just wanted to let you know that that'll be coming up. There's no meeting scheduled for the 23rd, obviously, and then October 7th, we have Columbia Baptist Site Plan and the continuance of the variance that we had tonight. And then there would be a proclamation on National Community Planning Month for you. That's the director's report for this evening, thank you. Do you have any further questions for me on these items?
I, in our packet, there was a draft proposal about transferred development rights. I didn't know if we were going to get to chat about that sometime, doesn't have to be now.
I think Paul's talking to council about it right now.
So we might talk about it some other time, just.
It is on the agenda for council tonight, so once we get some, it's, I think, really the initial discussion within a work session, so we'll get some guidance out of that tonight. And so I'm sure that'll be coming to you in some informal work session format before any formal action by the council to give first reading to an ordinance or anything like that, so. So it's in progress, and yeah, it's also being discussed right now initially.
Any other questions for staff? I will not be here on the 16th, so you have to handle this big art issue. I have to do some business travel. Okay, let's move. We didn't receive any correspondence, I didn't see. So before we move to our work sessions, since typically we're not hearing public comment at that, let me call up Mr. Thurston here. We got a speaker slip and hear your comments on the Columbia Baptist Site Work Plan.
Good evening. Keith Thurston, 1015 Birch Street, Falls Church, speaking for Historic Falls Church Incorporated tonight. Speaking on the issue of the parking landscape buffers that are required for any parking lot and the fact that they would be in the backyards of the historic houses. So the work that's been done already on the zoning that occurred within the last two years on these properties changing the backyards from residential to transac, excuse me, I've got a bug, to transitional zoning essentially bisected the backyards of the historic houses. And it was a really egregious impact on the historic ordinances for houses, because they're very clear about those, that the historic houses are to be protected with a minimum lot size surrounding them to protect the house itself. So the transitional zoning was with a purpose, of course, and the purpose is coming clear tonight that it's to allow for other than historic residential use of that parcel, which is otherwise not allowed by the zoning. So to now, tonight, you'll be, or when you look at the site plan, consider even encroaching more by putting the required parking landscaping buffer in the R1B zone, is what it's calling for. Now, what that means is that the T1 zone is already intruding into their backyards. The R1B zone means that the landscaping buffer is going further into the backyards and on the property of the historic houses, which are owned by the church. So this will further subtract from what required space there is to preserve around historic houses and make it them even less usable as independent structures. Now, in the city, we're supposed to be keeping historic structures and houses as severable, insalable units and lots. But these encroachments permanently ties the land of the historic house to the parking lot and the church use of it because that buffer is required for the parking lot. If you were to sell the historic house, it would make the parking lot then a violation. So this is permanently tying and interlocking the properties in an unusual way. So our ordinances to protect the historic structures and the land around them is very clear. It's been tested. The church has challenged them, has been to the Virginia Supreme Court twice, 1992 and 2010, on these exact historic houses and this exact issue, to diminish the use of the property and to use the land for some other purpose besides protecting the historic houses. And the Virginia Supreme Court twice ruled against the church and for keeping and standing up for the Falls Church preservation ordinances. This current approach is just one more tactic to diminish the historic structures and utilize the land for other purposes. And it would be ashamed if the planning commission was complicit in helping make that happen. You're a part of it, you were a part of the vote the last time around, when the zoning was changed to transactional, transitional instead of R1B. That was wrong. Anybody that's ever looked at zoning would laugh at that. It was just a disgraceful transaction. So this should be denied in a very clear way, stand for the city's preservation ordinances, and the proposed parking lot and the parking landscape buffers should remain off of the parcels of the historic structures. There's plenty of room there between the property line and North Washington Street to accommodate it. We don't have to include, intrude on the historic structures even more. And I think it would probably be maybe 8.3 feet, I'm not sure about that, but approximately that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Let's move to the work session then on the Columbia Baptist Site Plan. Are we getting a staff report, or are the applicant going to go first? This is a work session now, so we're a little more.
Yes, we have, we wanted to provide you an update. The staff report outlines the, the items that we wanted to specifically discuss. Maybe I can walk through those real quick, just to give you some context. And then the applicant has an update and presentation to inform you on the status of their site plan.
Okay, great.
All right, so I'll let them, I guess, go ahead and set up, get ready for that, and I'll just take a moment. So this work session is discuss the site plan and subdivision consolidation for the proposed Columbia Baptist Building Edition. The, as part of the work session, staff requests the commission's input on the revised streetscape design, the TDM strategies and parking management plan, and the North Washington Street facade of the church building that's proposed. The AB had identified a need for some better design along that street, and so we were looking for the applicant to address that this evening as well, in that context, for further information for both staff and the planning commission. Since your last work session, which was on May 20th, the planning commission at that time had asked about the church's parking, the TDM plan and off-site parking agreements and related items. We've listed a summary of those updates, and the applicant will be providing you additional information. Transportation demand management plan is provided, is now part of the application. Assigned parking agreement was provided for 405 North Washington and included additional 62 parking spaces on evenings and weekends. And thirdly, a 20-foot easement along North Washington Street and a 14-foot easement along West Columbia Street has been provided by the applicant for the purposes of future streetscape improvements. And lastly, ADA accessible curb ramps, crosswalk, been added on North Maple and partially to East Columbia Street. That's feasible to facilitate pedestrian access. The staff and the applicant has continued to meet on these items. The applicant intends on providing a final revised plan in response to those comments and discussions that we, you know, refined down to a small amount at this point. So we have this public hearing and final action scheduled for October 7th. And so in the context of that, the applicant will be providing the final plans for staff review and reflecting the planning commission comments tonight. Staff review, update on the site plan. Our pending comments that they're looking at now are some additional information on the location of bike racks regarding the bus stop and car pulling areas. And then the TDM needs to be in a more detailed plan format that details the strategies and the reporting and other management requirements, and instead of somewhat of an outline form. Off-site parking agreements provided further comprehensive details regarding the number of parking spaces, time of day, and weeks available. So we wanted just a little further information compiled on those comprehensively. And crosswalks, final configurations, the street locations, and interior parking areas. So what we're talking about is the interior parking area, you know, there's some crossing areas that are interior to the site that some basic crosswalks seem to be something that would be desirable. The Arbus has requested further information on plantings for the six-foot wide strip along North Washington Street. And there's several other items that are referenced in the staff letter dated August 19th, that's your attachment for. The subdivision consolidation, that's pretty straightforward, it's limited to some preliminary and final plat sheet labeling, signatures, just for, to get it to final form. In terms of site plan waivers, there's three that are listed. One's to allow the buffer that's required between the T1 and the R1B zoning districts to be located on the R1B zoning district area, that was mentioned in the Historic Falls Church, Inc. letter tonight. The second waiver is to allow a perimeter parking lot landscaping buffer of 8.3 feet in lieu of the required 10-foot in a small corner on the site, that's a very limited area. And then there was a waiver related to the shared parking standards in terms of the overall context of their parking management plan and TDMs and so forth in terms of the details of that regarding parking spaces provided, as shown in the table, how it would normally operate in the table. So that's the background on, so where we are on staff, we're, you know, in the final review, and our comments are limited in our last letter to them, so at this point, I'll turn it over to them. They'll update us on where they are on the staff comments in our most recent letter and address the other things that I've mentioned. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen, I'm Karen White with Walter Phillips, and I'm just going to walk through kind of what we've done since we were last here, and I believe it was in May. So can, just gonna, oh, here we go, thank you. Okay, so, sorry, here we go. So I think we're all familiar with the site here at Maple Avenue, Columbia, and North Washington Street. Site's just on just under five acres, zone T1 and R1B. Back in 2017, a portion of the site was rezoned to R1B. We discussed the variance that's concurrent with this project. And again, here are the waivers that Mr. Fuller just explained. Here is the site, this is the rendering from the last time we were here, and what I'm going to do is go through and I'm going to point to some of the changes that we've made. They're not shown on this exhibit right here, but I have some blowups to show you later in the presentation. So some things that have changed since we were last here, I'm going to, I guess I'll walk around this way. So one other thing on North Maple Avenue, staff asked that we add an additional easement behind the sidewalk for future streetlights. So we are providing a three-foot utility easement behind this sidewalk here, in case that project comes forward in the future. The city can do that without needing any easements. We have worked to provide a crosswalk in this location. We would eliminate the existing almost mid-block crosswalk that's out here today and put a new crosswalk with receiving handicap ramp in this location. If we come around the corner, we have provided a 14-foot easement along West Columbia. There's an existing mid-block crossing here. We have agreed to add a accessible ADA curb ramp on this side, as there's not one there today, on the far side. Moving around the street here, so we have a 20-foot easement we're proposing along Washington Street. We have added some bike racks. We have agreed to provide the bus stop pad that the shelter could be put on later. And we've also added some additional landscaping, so I'm going to keep going. Here's a summary of those things I just mentioned that we've agreed to do. And here's a blowup, so you can kind of see a little more of what we've agreed to do. So here is North Washington Street. So one question, there are overhead power lines in this area, so we were asked to put some low-level shrubs and plantings. We're providing that in the landscape strip. Here's the easement line of the new 20-foot easement we're providing. Here are three bike racks, so six spaces there today. The bus stop, I think we're still going to, working on the final location because there are some existing walls in front of Columbia Baptist, so we need to figure out the right place to put that with staff, but we're going to work through that before we resubmit. As we come to West Columbia, I rotated the view here, so it blew up a little bit. But again, here's the new handicap ramp that we are providing on the other side of West Columbia. Here is the existing bike share that was installed in the past couple of months. And again, the 14-foot easement, so if in the future there's streetscape improvements done by the city, they have the right to do that. There's an easement, they won't need to gain that from the church later. And then Maple Avenue, again, so we are doing the five-foot sidewalk, and then we have agreed to an additional easement for future streetlights, removing this crosswalk, putting this crosswalk in here, kind of squaring up this intersection so it feels like a more four-way intersection. Those are the main, I think, changes since we were last here. And again, the three items we're working on with staff is the TDM. Exactly, we're still figuring out how exactly this entrance is going to work. We've looked into maybe some traffic calming measures at this intersection, but it's very, very flat, so we're concerned about grading, so we're still working that out. And then the other remaining item, like I stated, was the bus stop location. I did want to talk about parking, just to kind of summarize that real quick. So we have three charts here. So there's three, three main uses. You have the daycare use, which parks at one space per employee. You have the single-family homes, which park for one space per unit. And then you have the church, which is one per every four seats in the sanctuary. So as you can see, so actually, under the demands that the church needs, which is the, the middle chart here, is actually the demand broken up per day and even per, you know, 12-hour periods during the week. So actually, for the demand, the highest demand that the church has is on Sunday, when the, there's, the daycare is not in operation, and that's 302 spaces. The rest of the week, the, the highest point needed is 60, which is during the day when the daycare is fully functioning. the daycare is fully functioning. But per the code, we did have to review the parking as if all the uses were happening at one time. So that's what the upper chart is here. So that's what you see if it was a chance that the daycare, the homes, and then the church were all functioning at the same time, the demand or the need would be 359 per the code. So that's where it came into, you know, requiring this parking reduction because as you can see on the third space, third chart, are provided, we are actually providing enough spaces to meet the demand. On Sunday, we have 314 and then on Monday during the day, 132, 300 and some on the evenings. The parking is being met in a couple of places, so obviously onsite where the church is today. They own property across the street, across Columbia, so those spaces there. And they also own spaces in that other office building, property that they own on Washington Street. So those are, obviously those three spaces, these three properties are church-owned. And then there are agreements that are in the site plan that are signed and agreed to with the two parcels across Columbia, 407 and 405 North Washington Street, 79 and 62 spaces. So those agreements are in the package for your review. So, and here is a map of those. And the one thing not accounted for in the, this parking count, but involved in our TDM is there is the Kaiser parking garage there and the church currently does run a shuttle service to the garage on Sundays. So that would continue and that also promotes folks to park in that area as well, which will happen throughout construction and then also continue, happens today and will continue in the future. That's kind of, so real quick, I guess I'll go over a couple of TDM items related to parking that we have agreed to. So just some items around the area. So there is the bike share station right on Columbia. We are also providing six spaces along the site frontage for users to bike easily to the property. We are adding crosswalks on North Maple, crosswalks are, improving the crosswalk, I'd say, on Columbia. As I noted, there's the shuttle bus on Sundays, it runs every 10 minutes to the Kaiser garage and back to the site. We are providing the bus stop pad on Washington and then, let's see, and then just widening the sidewalks. So we're widening the Washington Street sidewalk to 10 feet, providing a five-foot wide sidewalk on Maple Avenue. So all these are ways that we believe we are increasing walkability and bikability to the site as part of our TDM. I know the church is going to kind of roll out some, some information on carpooling and things, especially with construction, then to keep going after construction is complete. They are going to have some information, you know, at their welcome desk and in their bulletins and on their website. And then I guess another thing just from part of the TDM that happens today that would continue. So the church does have a lot of basically people on the ground on Sundays to helping direct traffic, making sure people don't go down the residential streets, they don't park on the residential streets, and directing cars to the off-site parking areas if needed. So those are just some of the things that are included in the TDM that we plan to resubmit to staff, hope actually tomorrow to get some feedback before we formally submit everything next week. So that's it for the site. I think I'm going to turn it over to John. Do you want me to, do you want me to pull the?
Just bring me up the operations.
Okay. It's all the way down at the bottom. Oh no, what did I do? I don't know, can you zoom out? Can you zoom out? I don't know what.
I hope so. How do you zoom out? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. You have all seen these elevations on May 20th. They haven't really changed much. What is on that board over there is what the original design was. At the May 1st Architectural Advisory Board meeting, comments were made mainly on the Washington Street facade, which is that one, okay? So, I said, what's on the board is, what's on the board is what we had shown them originally and then what is on the screen there is what we revised it to based on their comments, which we all showed you on May 20th, but then we didn't have the written comments on May 20th. We got them since then and so this is just kind of looking at this all again. Basically what we've done is this. First of all, we had sort of a monolithic, sort of one-element building along Washington Street and we've kind of split that up into several pieces now. We have a couple of shorter pieces and a couple of taller ones in the middle. All of that is brick, the darker part is brick and it'll be kind of a brown brick, you know? I don't know how I show these to you guys, they're so far away, but, am I allowed to go across this line? Anyway, so we split the, we split the big facade into, in a couple of pieces. We got rid of the big logo that said Columbia Baptist Church. We're not going to have that. Instead, we have these two elements of brick and then what's in between them is a metal panel. And one of the comments I saw at the end of the AAB comments was that, that metal panel to kind of define it better. This is going to be a, the company's called Centria and I've got, there's pictures here of different kind of panels. They're like, they're like modern architectural panels. They're not warehouse pre-engineer building panels. And so they're, they're just used in that one area and then across the top of the roof off to the left, which is here, let's see if I can get this to work, there it is. That area right there up above and this area here and this area here will be those panels. The rest of the building is brick, the brown brick is what most of the building is, but we're going to introduce some red brick along a stripe right across here and then across here and going around the corner and then tying in with the canopy around the staple. And so that centerpiece of the brick is more the color of the existing church, so we kind of tie those, those two colors in together. The windows, instead of being those two big long ribbon windows, we now have punched windows all around, all across the building like the, like you see here. We've taken one of the sets of doors out. There were three sets of doors along Washington Street, now there's just two. And let's see. We also took the roof line, which is kind of sitting there somewhere, and we at least dropped this part of the roof line here, which is actually the top of the brick, to match the gutter of the existing building. So as it comes around, you at least have that line tie, tie to it. That is basically what we did to the elevations. The bottom piece of this here, which is unfortunately labeled CMU on one of my drawings, it's really ground-faced eight-by-eight block across the base of the building. Some of that is repeated when you come around the corner and the internal part of the property, down in here, you have more of that same, same material. We do have some EIFS on the building, but that's only at the roof line and, oh my, let's see, you have the plans? Yeah, we do got it. And you can sort of see it here, it's set back from, you know, this is Washington Street here. That EIFS up high roof is this shape right here. So it's set back from the building walls all the way around and it just defines the higher, you know, the higher part of the sanctuary itself. So in a nutshell, that's, those are the changes we made in response to the Architectural Advisory Board. And that's really open frame, that's it.
So, thank you very much. The response to Architectural Advisory Board you're referring to, this is the May 1st meeting?
It was the May 1st meeting, we made the corrections by May 20th, but you hadn't gotten the meeting minutes yet.
Okay.
So, and I think, who's on the AAB? You are too, aren't you? There was somebody at the planning commission that was also on the AAB that was recognizing what we were saying when we were there.
That was probably me, the liaison.
Oh, okay, but you were at the AAB, that's.
That's right. So let me ask about that meeting. So this, this North Washington face looks vastly improved to me, but what they said at that meeting, this is attachment 12 of our packet, it says, "Overall, while portions of the addition are effective in design and materials, the overall project does not offer an attractive or welcoming design with respect to the Washington Street facing portions." This entire segment, this entire segment of the addition needs a revised approach in order to provide an improved design that is more open to and connected to pedestrians, street traffic, and the neighborhood in general. The applicant should also revise the landscaping and streetscaping in this area to provide a better experience for pedestrians, potentially to include integrated seating, et cetera, et cetera. While I see all those changes that you just made from that board to what was up there just a moment ago, were that, was that issue addressed? Because I don't see how it interacts, well, I like the windows and things like that. I don't see it how it interacts with the pedestrians and the street scape on the Washington Street facing portions was addressed. It's the language that, right there on the screen, so, was that addressed is what I'm?
I mean, I, I think it was. I mean, the issue is that that, that is, functionally, that's the room behind the sanctuary. That's like backstage.
Right.
Okay, so it's not a, there's doors there, but the public doesn't go in and out those doors. So without redesigning the entire building from the ground up, you know, those are still sort of, those aren't doors that people are going to use a lot. I mean, I think landscaping, I like Karen, speak to whatever we can do with landscaping there, that's how we will provide it. But, you know, you'll have people walking up and down that sidewalk, but they're not going in and out of the building along that side.
I guess the feeling is that that's the public face of the, of the church. For most people coming up and down 29 and walking up and down 29, that's the public face. And so if it's not attractive, then it doesn't give.
I mean, I guess by attractive, I mean, the changes we made to the facade, what else are you looking, are you looking for physical doors and public areas there or how else do you make it attractive?
That's what I go from.
If it's not functionally a public entrance?
I think they were talking about, they were mostly talking about more attractive landscaping there, maybe, you know, what else did they say? So integrated seating, they're just, they're talking about trying to make that like a friendly area, but it's.
Well, I mean, the language says more connected to.
Right.
Not that it's an entrance. The church by its design is inward-facing to the property. And I wasn't at this meeting and, I mean, I have a paragraph to go on. If you were at that meeting, what do you think they meant by more?
No, I think the idea was.
I thought they were just put off, I thought they were just kind of put off by.
By that.
By that.
Okay. What was your sense, Mr. Stevens?
No, exactly. They kind of looked at that and said, hmm, that's the back of a building and here it is on North Washington Street. So I think they were looking for the kind of changes that, that they made, still realizing it's still the back of the building.
I, I understand. This, this, that's why I asked, I said, was this part addressed? And so maybe the answer is it was, but that's not what I heard initially, so.
I mean, it's addressed with the building. I think there's a landscape portion that Karen and I have to work on yet as far as if there's anything else we do with, with integrated seating or with.
Because you did have a follow-up discussion with the AAB, right? Where you showed these plans. And as I recall.
I didn't.
So has the AAB seen this new revised elevation?
No, their recommendation was like approved with comments to come to planning commission. I don't think they asked to see it again.
We can always send it to them again, right?
Well, some of their other concerns too was like, they felt like the materials weren't, so how much of the materials have changed on that side?
I, I mean, it's brick and it's those nice metal panels. I don't know what, what is budget conscious about brick?
No, I think they meant the metal cladding.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's what I tried to clarify tonight, say, you know, it's, it's a nicer metal panel. If we have an objection to all metal panels in Falls Church, we can go a different route, but. I'm not sure what the objection is to, you know, high-grade metal panels that you see on.
I don't know either and I don't know that they do. We approved metal panels in the past on other buildings.
And we actually, we have the same product on this, this one, maybe just too much of it, but.
I think, I think that's probably what it is, is we have approved it, but usually we've moved to push some of it out or to change it a little bit, add more brick in cases. One thing I did want to ask, you were talking about, it's mostly the brown brick, but the older part of the building is mostly more the red kind of brick. I'm, I'm just curious, like, so why would you not do more of the red brick that, to have the two, or do you really want it defined that this is the old and this is the new?
If you look at the building design, it's not, I mean, it had, it carries the lines of some of the old building, but it's not the same architecture as the building.
So you want a definitive section?
I think, yeah, that's why we chose a different color as opposed to make it get all the same color.
No, I wondered because it's just sometimes that looks odd too, but it's hard to tell till you build it. Then you have to kind of hope that the sketches turn out well.
I have some questions about the parking, but let me turn it over to the commission if you have other comments you want to ask. Go ahead. Anyone?
I mean, I want to talk about the waivers, but do we want to do that now or do it later?
Let's talk about it after the parking, but just because, I'll just go in order, but the waivers definitely. Mr. Rankin, did?
Well, when you say parking, I have concerns that are very similar to what Mr. Thurston was talking about in terms of parking in the backyards of the historic houses. So is that waiver or is that parking?
Well, I think that's waivers. That's waiver.
That's a waiver.
I felt like it was a waiver.
Well, I'll keep my comments for the waiver.
Okay. Well, then I'll be brief about the parking and then we can move on to the waiver.
Mr. Chairman, we just got some questions about the street scape.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to understand this, the street scape and the, what's different from the street scape standard. I noticed in the staff report, it says that the applicant is unable to provide recommended street scape due to costs, but has provided an easement to enable the city to install desired street scape in future. So one question I had for staff is, under what circuit, I mean, we went through a fair amount of effort to create these street scape standards not long ago, so do we expect that applicants would be able to come back and tell us we can't do it because of cost? And I guess, I know it's a recommended, but how voluntary is this?
I can explain it. It's, the standards are, were adopted by policy, so they're not by ordinance and so it's not a mandatory item for the applicant, but the fact that it's a policy in place, we always discuss that with the applicant to see, you know, if they can do it or if they can do part of it. We have overhead power lines, so that's probably 10 times the expense of doing the hardscape and the softscape. And so at this point, that's not something that the church can afford by any means. And then to build it and still have the power lines means we, it doesn't work. And so in effect, we've gotten the dedication on both the side street and the main street, North Washington Street, that, that we need for the street scape. It's almost what we need on the side street, but we're getting what we need on the main North Washington Street. So by getting that dedication, it enables us to do that in the future when the time comes. And, you know, so we're able to implement the policy to the extent that's feasible at this time. If it was a special exception or there was a legislative action by the council and we were advisory on that, we would advise for the full street scape based on the size of a project and so forth. So that's where we've been able to routinely capture that by having those standards in place. We can also encourage applicants as they develop site plans to consider those. And at least we picked up some of the essential pieces that we need to implement that later.
So just to clarify then, the biggest barrier on North Washington Street is the power lines? Is that what's?
Yeah, overhead lines. So you can't plant the trees because they'll grow up and then, you know, you, the spacing and everything doesn't work with the power lines. So that's a very expensive item, so.
I just want to say, I also saw all the easements and, rather than doing street scape and we're getting easements, but I think it's expected with a project like this with a nonprofit, that we're just not going to get the same amount of street scape. Also, we tend to get it more when it's a special exception because we have more bargaining chips. Also, we tend to get it more when it's a special exception, because we have more bargaining chips.
Any other questions, non-waiver related? Okay, let me just quickly ask about the parking. So, we are, we are not meeting the code because the way that it requires it is that all activities are happening simultaneously. But what we've seen here is through this representation of demand that you can meet it because most of the activity or the main demand for the parking spaces is happening on Sunday. I didn't see this in the transportation demand management plan, I just, all I saw is this chart, and I think that this belongs in the TDM. But what, the other part I want to talk about is the parking spaces provided. Just so I'm clear, per the chart, can you put the chart, I don't know, it's like the fourth page or the fifth page? Yeah, perfect, okay, so it's the bottom, it's the bottom table. We are providing spaces, 101 on, on the site, and then 301, North Washington Street, then parcel B, then 407 North Washington Street, and then 405 North Washington Street. So, these, when we see, actually, I think it may even be on the next page, I'm sort of flipping everybody around here, but there are, this is the crux of my question, is, we're counting these in their full, yeah, perfect, in their full available parking, but there are actually buildings on many of these parcels. So, is the assumption that these are completely vacant on Sunday and have no parking requirements during that time? Because they have their own parking requirements during different times of, during all times, I guess I should say.
The ones that are required on the weekend are actually marked 24/7 and are not, are pulled out of those numbers. So, there are more parking spots on the 407 and 405 than are counted on here, but they are marked 24/7, seven days a week.
They're marked what, 24/7?
Those parking spots are marked only use by 405 and 407, we cannot use them.
I understand, okay.
So, they, these are only, the numbers are only ones we have access to. So, the ones that they require on the weekends are marked for them only.
Okay, so that sounds what I wanted to hear, so, so I'm, I'm clear, we're not double counting the available parking for those buildings?
And the agreement actually like notes the actual spaces and has like dots on them, it's in the site plan, so it's pretty, it's spelled out pretty very clearly.
Okay, all right, so that was my main question, we weren't double counting spaces. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and this is just inform, you know, I'd just like to see the information correct. You know, I'm looking again at this church demand periods, and I understand that you feel like you can meet your Sunday 302 with the 314, but I'm surprised that you're not showing additional needs on some of the weeknights. Because, I mean, I don't know if you guys still do it, but it used to be a big dinner on Wednesday nights that people came to, and the parking lot would be pretty full for that. So, are you guys saying you have no activities in the sanctuary or the church on the evenings? Because those are all zeroed out.
There are none in the sanctuary, yes.
Well, I, I guess, I guess what is our parking, our parking only talks about the sanctuary, not the entire building?
Yeah, the, the sanctuary is, is, is the main parking requirement.
Okay, well, I mean...
One space per, for seats.
Well, I just, I just...
And that's, that's what's driving it, other than daycare and the single-family homes.
Okay, I just, it is kind of deceptive, this chart, because if you go there most weeknights, the lot's pretty full, and, I mean, I don't know if you guys still do your Wednesday night dinner, I used to go there with a friend who went to your church, but...
And we could reflect that on here, the, each, the weeknights from 6:00 to 7:00, 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, but we have, we, we won't have any more than are in that entire sanctuary in that church on a Sunday night, because we have no space that's anywhere near that size. So, at a, at a maximum, it would be maybe another 100 spots required, and we have 323 in the evenings. There's no, and at that time, we're not using the Child Development Center in the evenings.
Right, no, I, no, I, I get that, that's why I said it's more informational, but it, it does look, it just makes you think that nothing's going on on this property, and, but you also don't have the music program listed here. And I know that could be, there could be quite a few people on, on site for that. My, my son took a lot of lessons at your church, so I know there was a lot of people there, and it was very loud. But, so anyway, I just, I just thought, like, it just...
You should try it when there's a music class over your office during the day, that's barrels of fun.
My son played, learned the drums there, so I'm sure their class was very loud.
I probably enjoyed that quite a bit.
But, and the violin, so he learned a lot of stuff there. But, you know, anyway, so I just, I just thought, like, from a factual point of view, this chart isn't really...
We could, we could reflect that in the usage.
It just seemed like it would be more realistic, because, because we all know church properties are, are, I know our church, I go to Falls Church Presbyterian, and we have stuff going on all the time, our lot's pretty much full most of the time. Okay, thanks.
Another parking question, what if 405 and 407 are, you know, sold, or the agreement, you know, that the owners of those properties decide to end the agreement? I mean, they, they have to come back in and amend the site plan, I mean, in order to meet the parking? Since we're allowing them to use those shared agreements to meet the, to meet the requirement, would, if those properties, I mean, I understand they have an agreement now, but let's say that changes in a year. So, I mean, I guess that's, that's a question for staff, I suppose, you know, since we're requiring that, or we're using that to satisfy the requirement.
It's true for Northside Social, too.
What, what, what would happen if that agreement ended? I mean, it sounds like they have an agreement that's been executed now, but those properties could change hands, and the new owner could say, nah, I don't think I want to do that anymore, and I'm going to have, I want to rent to other tenants that may need the spaces on the weekends, so... I guess that's, that's a question for staff, and what happens to the site plan? They have to come back in and amend it if they're not meeting parking anymore?
Yeah, we would check with the, well, yeah, the zoning administrator as well on that, and the agreements, you know, are reflecting the code at this point, so...
I mean, historically, isn't, generally doesn't it require like a 20-year commitment or something?
It used to be, now it's a 10-year.
10-year, and so presumably, I mean, I don't know, but presumably those agreements would transfer to any new owner for at least...
So, it's a 10-year agreement?
Yeah, it's a 10-year agreement, and then...
Those have been, those have been executed?
So, they've provided the agreements.
Okay, so it sounds like if they, well, then they would need to find a new, a new agreement, is what it sounds like, all right.
I don't, I don't have a question, I will say, I live in the neighborhood, and generally speaking, they do a good job managing the parking now, so I can give a thumbs up to that.
Okay, all right, let's, let's dive into this waiver issue. You want to go first, Mr. Rankin, on the...
Well, I mean, the, the, I didn't like the original subdivision plan, and a big reason was because I was uncomfortable with the encroachment on the backyards of the historic houses. I live in a historic house, I think it's cool, we have these rules that are in place to try to preserve them, and I, it seemed like it was pretty clear the expectation of the backyards of, of houses. So, I've never been a fan of it, and so now to further encroach by putting that landscape buffering into the residential part, which is my understanding, seems even worse. So, I'm sure they're doing it because that gets them more space for parking, but it, it just seems to be making a bad situation worse for the historic buildings.
Can we highlight it on a map, like?
Yep.
Where, where, exactly we're talking about, so...
We can, but I would also like to note that it was labeled and noted on the rezoning plan, so the plan hasn't changed, just so we're clear, it was always shown on that line.
Yeah, I was always against it, so, I haven't changed it either.
No, no, I know, but I just want to make sure it didn't change with this, you know, it didn't change with the application.
Yeah, but, but it wasn't pointed out, and, and there wasn't anything in the staff report back then.
That might be true, but it was, it was labeled, yeah.
And, and there was no, like, if there had been a statement, like, in the future, we're going to put this landscape in there, and you're going to have to give a waiver on the site plan, I think we would have noticed that.
Well, there, there was a note that said a site, a waiver will be required. I agree, it might have been in the staff report, but, here is, so the area in question is right here. So, the zone line is at the back of curb of the, of the parking, and so the buffer is on the R1B properties right here. Nope, that's, sorry, that's the closest I have, so that's that area right here. And then the other, the 8.3 buffer, where it's reduced 8.3 feet, that's kind of this pinch point right here. It's just where it gets a little tight, it's less than 10.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about that.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I, I'm fine with the number, the second waiver, the 8.3, because it is just a small area that's pinched. And I'm okay with the waiver with the parking spaces, because I think the parking works now. And, and I, I assume that maybe the church could have an increase in numbers with the larger sanctuary, but, you know, at that point, I think the church can try to work out how they're going to deal. They have other properties and, and things like that, so, but I, I definitely can't support the first waiver, there's no way. I also didn't, actually did not vote for that land use and zoning change, because I felt like the original opinion of our city attorney, that it was illegal, and it was spot zoning, was correct, and I don't think that the increase of the zoning change to the block made it legal. I think it was still spot zoning. So, and I'm also concerned, because some of the reasons we were given for this action, for taking the backyards of the, the historic houses and making them T1 and put parking on them, was that they, that they needed better access for daycare parking. But this new parking doesn't give better access to daycare parking, they still have to cross the drive aisle, they still have to walk pretty far. I don't think it's better than the parking that's currently there. I think that a lot of the daycare people continue to do what they do now, which is they park on Maple and Columbia, because then they're on the same side as the building, and they don't have to cross a drive aisle or a street to get their kids. So, so that's, you know, that's kind of concerning. And the other reason we were given for that change is that we were going to get better landscaping for the parking, that the, that the church would landscape their parking. But I don't think, and we obviously missed it, but I don't think that we thought better landscaping for the parking would mean that we were going to use more of the historic home property. So, at this point, there's no way I could support this site plan with this waiver.
Any other comments on the waivers here?
I mean, I would agree, I'll just, since we're talking about the waiver, and we're going to need to, I mean, I would agree, I think that, and I did vote for the rezoning, but it was a close call, but that's history now, so, I mean, we're not going to rehash that, I mean... But, and I, and I believe you, that it was, it was shown on the rezoning plan. But I do agree with some of the, you know, discussions that have, that's gone on as far as what it does to the historic houses, what it, it further, I think compromises the integrity of those properties, knowing that, yes, you know, they're, they're owned and used by the church, but I, I, and I guess it's a push and pull, because I know you're, right, you're doing it for parking, and, and, you know, parking is an issue too, but I'd be interested to know, again, if you were, didn't get that waiver, you know, what that might do to the plans and, and, you know, the additional spaces, is there anywhere else that, where you could pick those up? Maybe not on this property, but maybe, I don't know, is there, is there some other solution that would, that could avoid it? I'm sure you've thought about that, but maybe, I don't know, I don't know if there are any other options that could, that would obviate the need for that waiver, because it's problematic.
I, I think it's pretty obvious it's going to be one or the other, it's, it's going to reduce the parking, we're still going to build some parking along that back, we'll probably just have to cut that one section that's right along there. So, there still will be parking along the back there, we just will have, so now we'll have a bigger problem with our parking issue.
Right, no, exactly, no, it's a push and pull. How many spaces would you lose, approximately, do we know? Is it that whole row, I mean, what would you lose?
Probably the...
You know, the funny thing though is, we're talking about parking, and at the same time, especially with our discussions up on West End at the development near the school, we are also been talking a lot about how transportation is going to change a lot as well, too. That in the long term, people are going to move and go places in different ways than they are now. So, I just, I think that the integrity of the historic houses is more important than the parking, personally. And I also think that this is another, you know, we were talking about the code early. We do have historic home ordinances, which are technically not being followed anymore, because these houses are supposed to be on R1A lots, and they're really not now. So, I mean, this is just a continuation of, of what, what happened before, which, again, you know, I didn't vote for anyway because of these issues.
Yeah, I mean, that's true, I mean, this, this commission has, you know, we, we spent a lot of time over the last couple of years on, on, on a, as far as parking goes, that's kind of citywide, as far as, you know, trying to encourage people to provide less parking. So, but, you know, it's, obviously, there's a, you know, we don't want to cause detriment to the neighborhood by having folks, you know, having people kind of, you know, and I think that's been, you know, managing that. And so, we want, and we want you to have enough parking to serve, you know, serve your use adequately, but the same token, right, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion on this commission about trying to reduce parking and, and not require people to provide as much parking. I mean, there's a stormwater, there's a probably a small stormwater benefit to losing those spaces and putting the buffer there. So, there's some other pop, you know, potential positives to providing less parking, but as long as it doesn't, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't cause a detriment, you know, to, to the neighborhood. So, it's, it's, it's a close call, to be honest with you, I mean, it's competing interests, but, yeah, I may wind up on the side of the historic houses if I had to, if it's going to come down to, you know, choosing one over the other, and trying to either find another, another way to, off-site, to deal with, you know, getting those additional spaces or, you know, or some, some other solution, but...
Just to talk to the issue about how it's improving the parking for the Child Development Center, just to point out that the current entrance to the Child Development Center is down here. The new entrance will be here.
Okay.
So, that this was going to be pretty much all the parking for the Child Development Center directly in front of that entrance. So, that's, that's what we meant by improving the parking.
Okay.
So, I think if you look at this, if we had to get rid of these and put the buffer here, we would lose, obviously, those spaces.
What's the number, what's the count?
It's 15 to 20, depends upon...
But most of the parking, your chart in here for daycare is actually for the staff, correct?
Yes.
So, it's not that big of a deal wherever they park, because they're just, it's like you park for any job, and sometimes you park close to your job, and sometimes you don't. And what we were talking, you were talking about that time with parents picking up kids, but I went over there and, and watched, and a lot of, like I said, most of the parents parked on the street. So, I don't think this, I don't think they're going to want to come in and go all the way around there, they're just not going to do it. So, I don't know, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that will, is, the reason because of that is because the entrance is right on this corner.
Right.
So, it's much easier for them to be here, but now with the entrance being over here, this will be the much more convenient parking. We actually do discourage them from parking, mostly from a safety issue. We try to get the kids off the street as much as possible and get them to the interior.
I know, but it's just, I think for some people, they, it's, they think it's faster.
Oh, absolutely, it's all because it's faster.
And I think now, if you look at the way the, the new lots would be, I see people, if they were coming in from Washington, parking on this side, and then walking over to the entrance, because it wouldn't be that much further, because I think that would still be the quickest way to do it than going into an interior lot. But, anyway, it doesn't matter. I mean, the main issue here is, is the integrity of the houses and what our historic ordinance says.
Do you know what the reduction in the square footage to the three properties is as a result of the 10-foot buffer being on the property side of the houses?
The area that's being used as a buffer, I mean, there's no reduction to the lot size.
Right.
But the area that's being utilized for...
Consumed by the buffer, yeah.
It's eight and a half feet by... Have to get a scale, we'll figure it out.
Or, maybe later, but I don't know whether we're talking about a 2% reduction of what's there, or 10%, or, I'm just trying to get some scale of, of the effect.
Go ahead. I believe they have a, I can pull this up, I think, believe they have a 40-foot rear yard, so it'd be, you know, 10 feet of that rear yard, because we held the parking lot to provide the required rear yard.
So, that sounds almost like a 25% reduction then.
Well, 10, 10 feet of 40, so, yeah, correct.
All right, so this is, you know, work session here, so I want to give the, the applicant some guidance, just based on what, you know, our general thinking is informally. If they were to lose 15... If they were to lose fifteen spaces, I'm just gonna use that number. The demand says on Sunday, based on these parking charts we saw, they need three oh two, and they're gonna provide three fourteen. So, if we reduce that by fifteen, or, I mean, the math is if you reduce it by twelve, then you're gonna be able to meet their demand, or the demand. As a group, sort of informally, are we giving the direction that says, reduce these spaces so that we do not put the buffer on the historic houses? Or keep it as it is so that they have more parking? Because it's, no matter what, it's a, it's a, it's a reduction, it's approval of a reduction parking. The code says three fifty-nine, they're saying three fourteen suffices and even exceeds their demand. Are we, as a, as a commission, giving them guidance to say, get rid of these spots so we can protect these historic homes? Or do we want to continue with the plan as proposed? I'd like to give them some guidance.
I agree with that. I mean, like I said, we've been talking a lot about what the long-term parking issues, you know, are gonna be, and I think people are changing how they do things. So, I think I'd go with reduction in the parking. And like you said, in the end, it's really only three spots over what they provide, so...
That's if it's fifteen, they said fifteen to twenty, but I, you know, I don't know if there's an exact count at this moment. Do you have any sort of guidance you wanna give in terms of the historic homes versus the parking reduction? Yeah, Mr. Stephen, let me, just to give the applicant some guidance here.
I'm still trying to think this through. Initially, I was thinking that the buffer would encumber those properties if at some point there was a decision to sell them to somebody else. But then I'm advised that that can't happen, that these lots are connected to the church use. And that is the only way that they can be used. So, there is no option, as I understand it, of selling these off to some other individual who would be encumbered by having that ten-foot buffer there.
I think there is an option that can come back and, and there could be a change to the site plans and things like that that would allow that to be sold. I mean, the whole point was that they were supposed to stay in their own lots and be able to be sold, if possible, if needed.
Yeah, just to clarify, I did look at that earlier. So, under the, on sheet C zero-two, zero-three, which is the zoning approval in 2017 May, that talked about the historic houses and that they shall be used for church purposes. And then it talks about, and number seven, proffer shall run in favor of the City of Falls Church and shall not be subject to change without approval of the City Council. So, you would basically have to revisit the rezoning. And so, it wouldn't be a site plan change under the planning commission's authority. It would be something that's, and the proffers run with the land, so. So, in terms of that, I think that's addressed well in the proffer statements.
But the end result is, sorry, I didn't mean to say...
It's just a heavier lift.
It's a heavier lift, but it could, it's possible.
You have to amend the proffers.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to go back to council.
We amend proffers a lot, we've done it multiple times.
Any guidance over here in terms of how you would like to see this come back to us?
Yeah, I already spoke, and I think, yeah, if I, it's, again, competing interests, and I can certainly sort of see merits to either approach. But I think on balance, I have to fall on the side of the, keeping the buffer off those, the yards of the, of the historic homes. So, then reducing, reducing the parking to maintain that buffer on the church side. Yeah, so that's, that's at least, it sounds like three or four of us are saying that.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
I mean, there is a third option, right? Is to maintain the backyards of the historic houses and still ask them to come up with those parking spaces somewhere. We were kind of giving them easy options, but, yeah, I, I just think, regardless of the use and if it's church use or not, that putting the parking lot, I've always thought this, putting the parking lot so close to the historic house just seems to go against the spirit and the letter of the ordinance in place to protect historic properties. I generally am less concerned about parking in general, so I, if it were just a trade-off, I'd probably, wouldn't have much trouble going with the backyards and reduced parking. But, so I'm not too worried about that. But, yeah, I, to me, I've never liked the parking lot getting right up there on those houses.
All right, as, as for me, my own guidance would be similar to what you've heard here, is I'd rather see a reduction in parking and keep the buffer onto the, the, I guess, church property away from the historic home, as far away from the historic homes as possible. But still, that, the reduction in parking as a result would not prevent me from supporting the application. I'm much more in favor of reducing parking than I am in encroaching on the historic homes. So, take that guidance as you wish. It seems to be several of us who feel the same way. If you wanna speak, absolutely. Okay. Any other comments or feedback on this, we lost Brent, on this site plan? I think otherwise, I think we're okay, this is the big issue. Would you like to say something?
Just thank you for hanging in there with us for way too long. But we're in this for the long term, so we don't really mind, so we'll get there eventually.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It's, it's ten thirty PM.
I noticed that.
Yeah. Rules of procedure is that you would have to ask for a motion to continue the meeting with a majority vote.
I am not gonna ask for that motion, I'm gonna just adjourn. I think we're, I think we're good. Do we have any other comments? We are...
Well, there's the environmental...
Oh, you're right, I thought that we were done.
Is that...
Oh, my goodness.
Is that a pressing, is that a...
No, I think we can punt that.
My first trip is not business, the next one's business.
Is that a pressing thing on the grand scheme of things? Gary, the timing of that?
I'm gonna leave.
Don't we have to vote to go up to ten thirty?
Yeah, we just talked about that bathroom guy.
That's the, we, that was the bylaws, we can't...
No, we do have to vote, I don't remember if we decided on unanimous, but we did have...
We needed a majority.
Majority.
I remember.
Yes, no, I know, we talked about it at great length.
You'll give us a right to make any...
Okay, so, we definitely need a motion then, there's a whole nother agenda item.
You could, you could defer that to the next meeting?
I, I'm fine with that, I'm gonna excuse myself either way, so you guys can continue on, but I've got an early morning tomorrow, so...
We get your right to make changes to the...
I mean, it's work session, you guys do it your own.
Okay, well, let's, but I'd love to talk about it, so if it doesn't screw up in schedule of things to talk about it at our next meeting.
I mean, we have staff available for this item tonight, so we're here.
If I could address the scheduling issue. Part of the problem is, it has to come to a planning commission work session before a city council work session. So, we're scheduled here tonight and then at city council on September the sixteenth, which would be the next work session. The plan was to do a public meeting and survey in October with the hope that we would then be able to come back to you, either to a work session or if you think it's in good shape already, to a regular meeting in November or December. The problem, if we let it slip another month, which is what would happen if we can't discuss it tonight, we'll end up getting, colliding with budget meetings. And in city council, that makes it very difficult to get scheduled time.
Well, I will hold it against you guys if you talk about it tonight.
Are you...
Okay.
Brent, are you gonna leave as well?
I'm not gonna leave, but I'll vote against going up to ten thirty. If I lose, I'll stay.
Sure.
Well, is anybody else need to leave? Because we could still have a quorum, even if we lose two people.
You guys can continue on, I mean, I don't think that would...
I'm ready to stay.
Okay, yeah, so let's, let's entertain a motion. We, it looks like we'll have a quorum no matter what, so we should proceed. The staff here waited till ten thirty. I feel an obligation to that, and I don't wanna disrupt the schedule. So, can I get a motion to continue the meeting past ten thirty?
I move we continue the meeting past ten thirty.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
All the same.
Nay.
All right, we have, we, the, the ayes...
Nay on principle, because we should not, our agenda should be adjusted to avoid going past ten thirty.
I... The ayes have it, so we are going to continue. If others need to leave, they may. We have a quorum to discuss this. We got delayed by the spire discussion, and I knew, I knew, we didn't have a meeting in August, the second meeting in August, and I knew tonight was gonna be really busy, but I'm unhappy that we've gone so late. All right?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for agreeing to hear me out tonight. I will skip through some of this fast, I promise. So, the agenda for my present take note. The mouse is not... Oh, I just used the scroll wheel, okay. All right, so I was going to address the impacts of the comprehensive plan, but I think that's something you're all familiar with. You've heard it so often with the demographics chapter and the housing chapter, you don't need that bit. Public engagement, you know how this comp plan is written with public meetings, meetings with the boards and commissions. So, we'll skip, if I can, there we go. Right to our motivation for writing the chapter. The, this particular chapter wasn't, hasn't been updated since two thousand and five, so the two thousand and five chapter was great. Tremendous narrative descriptions of our natural resources, but it had a significant focus on protection, preservation, and restoration, which is great. But we're now in a situation where things are changing in the city. And so, the revision of the chapter is intended to address our changing environment. Have to be really precise with this here mouse. The key changes that I've tried to address and that have come up in discussion is our changing population, the city's population's gonna grow by forty-two percent by 2045. Redevelopment of both the commercial and the residential sector affects city land use faster in residential than in commercial, actually, which is a surprise to many people. And then, of course, the big, big issue that we need to deal with is climate change. I mean, I've written regional here because that's what we need to address, but it's everywhere. So, just graphical representation of that, there's the population projection, some examples of redevelopment, both commercial and residential. And then, this is just a simple graphic showing how heavy rainstorms increase or are predicted to, have increased and will be predicted to continue to increase. This does not illustrate the fact that it's also going to get a lot hotter, but it's a big issue for us. So, the message of this revised chapter, the old chapter was preserve, protect, restore, don't lose it. The new chapter is talking about using our natural resources to help ourselves survive the changes that are happening. Basically, the input I'd like to get from you tonight, or if you don't want to get into deep discussions tonight, you can always send in written comments, are the vision statement, what do you think of the vision statement? It's rather long, but it's modeled on the vision statements of the other chapters. Mobility is for all modes, parks for the people, the housing chapter. This is the type of vision statement, only the Vision 2040 chapter is, the vision statement is very visionary. In the other chapters of the comprehensive plan, it's much more a practical statement of what we're trying to do. So, your comments on the vision would be welcome. And then, there are five areas that I've identified for goals. This came primarily out of the public meeting that we had last year. Climate and air, stormwater streams and natural springs, urban forest and biodiversity, consumption and waste, and community. So, the last draft that you saw did not have community broken out as a separate section, it was part of the introduction. And one of the questions I have for you today, in, in the introduction right now, there's a section about intergovernmental cooperation and legislative advocacy. I think that that would best go in the community section, or it could stay in the introduction. So, I'd like to have your opinion on that. And then, there are specific goals listed for each of the sections. You can see them in the chapter itself, or you can see them in the, I assume you have copies of the presentation. Are there issues that you think are not addressed in the goals or parts of the goals that you think we should reemphasize or change the order of emphasis? And obviously, in this community one, if the legislative advocacy was in here, would have to be part of the goals. Each section of the chapter addresses our needs in the context of change. So, in the context of our changing population, changing climate, changing redevelopment. And at the end of the chapter, rather, sorry, at the end of each section, there are strategies which are general approaches, how are we going to achieve those goals? And I've had some comments that, you know, there are no numbers in these goals, but that's not how goals are written in the comprehensive plan. They tend to be very general. If you look at some of the chapters that have been revised earlier, you get generals, you get a general statement of goal. This is sort of the direction we want to be headed in. Then, strategies are the ways in which we're going to approach those goals. And then, specific project and policy actions. In the case of this chapter, rather than breaking the project and policy actions up by the section of the chapter they address, we tabulated them all together, because if you increase your urban forest canopy, you're also doing stormwater management, you're also doing climate management. So, it didn't seem to make sense to separate the goals. It would have been a very artificial separation of those things. So, the acts, asks that I have of you are, what do you think of the vision statement? What do you think of the goal statements for each section? Specifically, should the intergovernmental cooperation be in community? And can you prioritize these proposed policy actions and programs and projects? And are there things that you don't agree with in the way that they're currently prioritized? Just, you should have received a paper copy of some comments made by Ed Salzberg today. He is an expert on environmental sustainability and resilience, and he had some very useful contributions to make in terms of how this, these topics are addressed in the comprehensive plan. So, rather than bore you with more slides, I'll just, go ahead, please.
I just wanna say, I'm glad you broke community out, I think that's a really important part.
That was certainly the feedback we got at the public meeting. There was a tremendous interest in community involvement, and it's, you know, as a department of one, I have to say that I couldn't do my job without the community being involved.
I'm just gonna look to the left and see if we have any comments about this presentation and what we've heard on this.
You wanna go first, you want me to? All right, well, given the hour and everything else, I'm gonna keep these much shorter than I would have if we were taking this up at eight thirty or nine. First of all, I just wanna say, this draft is a substantial improvement over what was there before. There's a lot more substance, and I kind of feel like it connects a lot more with the huge issues in the environment that certainly I see occurring, as I'm sure everybody else does as well. So, thank you very much for that. Just a couple of, I have a number of, like, small edits, and I'm not gonna go through those this evening. I'll just share those and, you know, you can decide whether to adopt them or not. So, just a couple of bigger issues for you. First of all, on the, on the vision, given the importance of climate change and how this is going to rapidly overtake us over the next couple of decades, where I think half of what we talk about is gonna be climate change, once we get ten, fifteen, twenty years out. I think the vision really should have a phrase in there that addresses the need to prepare and adapt to climate change. And it could be that you may need to take out some of the other details that are in there in order to make that work. You know, for example, even though it's, obviously, green infrastructure is very important, it may not need to be in the vision so much. So, you might be able to kind of take out some of those details, but by all means, include something that references the need to adapt and prepare for climate change.
Okay.
In terms of some other things... In terms of some other things that I'd like to see in there that are somewhat larger level. If we're, if we're gonna be successful in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, then we need to look at those components in buildings that are still using fossil fuels. So that would be, for example, heating, space heating, water heating, cooking, laundry. All these things primarily use gas today, and we need to begin to let people know that at some point in time, we're gonna have to transition these to electricity, which at that point, we're using a cleaner grid. And so that's the method for reducing those greenhouse gas emissions. That's already started in California, and I expect it to be picked up in other states. It's not gonna happen nearly as quickly in Virginia, but I think we'll get there eventually. I think we need some kind of a standard for what's called EVSE, those are the electric vehicle supply equipment, otherwise known as charging stations. A lot of communities now are starting to come up with guidelines for mixed-use development and other developments for developers in terms of the number of charging stations that they have to put in. Right now, we kinda have it only as a very broad aspiration. We may need to consider through further study if there are some specific numbers and goals for our developers to reach for.
One of the actions is to develop a plan for electric vehicle infrastructure and increasing its use. So that would be addressed in that plan. It's sort of, I was modeling this, that approach on the mobility for all modes, where a lot of the action items are to develop a plan.
Yeah.
And some of those plans we have to do, like the stormwater management plan and the solid waste management plan have to be done under state law right now. But, you know, obviously, I've worked with you and the Energy Transition Subcommittee on beginning an electric vehicle transition plan. So yes, it would be a plan.
It's in there, basically, okay. I'm gonna leave it at that, Mr. Chair, I mean, there's a lot of other detailed things, but I think it'd be better just to, in light of the hour, just to send those in separately.
Okay. In terms of the, we, when do we do the actual vote on this?
It depends on what sort of reception it gets, both from you and from the city council at the work sessions now. If, if everyone's more or less okay with the structure and content, then after the public meeting, we could either come back to another work session, which would be in November, and then do a regular meeting, or if you think it's ready to go, to a regular meeting, we could go to a regular meeting in November or December. I would like to, you know, have the whole thing finished before the end of the year.
Sure.
Because of the budget.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if it's like minor, if it's a structural issue, then we may need to have another meeting. But if it's just minor items that come to light, we can have a longer public meeting and say, the motion says, and make the following corrections or something, and just so that we get the opportunity to make these without shortchanging it officially. I don't, I know, I mean, I think this is super important, but you two are very passionate about this topic, and I wanna not shortchange you because it's late at night, so. I think we got a couple more bites at this apple, potentially, if we structure it right, so. But that said, Mr. Weiss, let's, let me hear your comments.
I'd like to bite the apple right now, if that's okay. I think this is terrific, and I would enumerate all the terrificness about it, but for the hour, so let me just say, I think it's a really huge improvement. So thank you, I agree with Tim's comments, Mr. Stevens' comments on the vision, adding climate change to it. I also want to endorse Ed Salzberg's comments, I think he's spot on and aligned with some of my comments. I found the climate and air section focused very much on mitigation. I'd like to see, in addition to the evaluation of need section, on our climate resiliency and the needs there. To that end, I think in, one of the issues in climate resiliency will be protecting vulnerable populations in the city of Falls Church. I noted in the staff report, we said we weren't dealing with social sustainability issues, but I think this is one that needs to go in this chapter. And if it doesn't go here, I don't know where else it would go.
There is about half a sentence addressing it, but it could be better.
Yeah, okay, particularly with respect to heat, I'd like to see that dialed up. With respect to climate resilience, I recognize staff resources are limited, but this is urgent, so I'd like to see develop, doing a climate risk assessment bumped up to a short-term action item, if possible. So that's the piece on climate resilience. Zero waste, I don't think we should shy away from a zero-waste plan. I know for people who don't understand what that means, it raises hackles. We're not saying we're going to control what our citizens are consuming. I don't think the citizens of Fort Collins, Colorado, Asheville, North Carolina, the state of Connecticut, or all the many other places in this country that have zero-waste plans in place, are controlling what their citizens are buying and using. It's, it's a way to engage the community, incentivize reduction of consumption and reuse, and to divert, as you know, more like 75 to 90%, not 100%. So I think the modification there would be in the action plan, saying that we're going to develop a zero-action plan, and not just for public buildings. And I think modifying it in the discussion, in the section, I think we need to engage the entire community on this. In terms of the urban forest section, I think it's terrific that we say we want to, one of the strategies, I think, was require more green space for mixed-use and commercial developments. Just to second Melissa's comments from earlier in the evening, we're giving up on landscaping buffers in many projects, so it's death by a thousand cuts. So I support that strategy, I'd like to see a more explicit action item in there to that effect. And then lastly, I think it would be, I don't feel strongly about it, but I think it would be helpful, I guess, to include intergovernmental cooperation in the community piece. I'd specifically like, suggest that we reference COGS, CIPC, whatever it stands for, climate energy.
Well, there's also the MQAC, and there are a variety of other groups within COGS, so it doesn't really help to spell out all of the acronyms, just, I think, saying that we're involved in. The environmental committees of that group might be sufficient.
Might be politically wise, politically wise to mention CIPC since Councilman Z is currently chair.
I think so, and what I like about CIPC is it's very clear and concrete, and it commits certain, 100% of jurisdictions have committed to adopting certain actions. So my last request, and I recognize this is work for somebody, but I would like to see a comparison of the CIPC plan versus what's in here. Like, are we hitting all the 100% actions? Do we know that that's true, are there any 100% actions that we're missing there?
Mr. Stevens went through it with me, so yes, we are.
We did, we went through them.
Okay, good, then I, then I will rely on Mr. Stevens for that, all right. Thank you very much, I think this is great.
Thank you, Cory.
Great, Mr. Krasner?
Since I'm here.
Yep.
I would say, I mean, I'll echo the kudos that it's certainly an improvement. The stormwater section, I mean, I think especially in light of the, you know, terrible flash flood event we had in the city back in July, a lot of people are sort of tuned into that, and I think, so it's timely that you're doing this this year. You know, I think people especially now understand, you know, what that means, you know, as far as, you know, the state of our stormwater management. And so I think you could perhaps maybe even beef that section up a little bit, I mean, you know, there's some just very minor changes to it, but I think, and I don't know if that's covered somewhere else in the comp plan, and maybe other areas that touch on it, but I think if there are ways to kind of beef up that section on things that can be done, both on large projects, but also on residential, single-family lots, I mean, there's a whole gamut of things that can be done to improve both water quantity and quality. And I think, you know, again, it's really fresh in people's minds because of what happened, unfortunately, but because of that, it's a, it's a opportunity to, because there seems to be some support and widespread understanding, you know, because it's been, because of what happened. And then the other thing was more of a question, I noticed that, you know, you're, you kind of, you list like, I guess, like, sort of other groups that are involved. You know, you kind of, VIPIS gets like their own, like, paragraph in here, you know, along with the Environmental Sustainability Council, which is, that's kind of, like, I don't know, is that kind of a creature of the city, I forget what they are, but.
It's the Board of Commission.
Yeah, that's the Board of Commission, so, but VIPIS is kind of an independent group, I don't know, and there may be other groups, I don't know.
They are particularly strongly involved in environmental programs, in that they administer our rain smart grant program. They run the neighborhood tree planting program.
Yeah, no, and it's fine to include them, I don't wanna.
They administer the Operation Earthwatch now.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure if we include them.
And operation.
So we have three.
If you include them, and there's some other group that's gonna feel like that they didn't get included, I don't know, because I bet there are a lot of like other groups.
They had, VIPIS has money, so I'm sure if there's another group that has money.
You know, I'm.
If there are other groups that I should have included, I'd love to include them, I just came up with the ones I could think of.
I think most of them were included, most of the other groups are part of either a task force of the Sustainability Council. Other than VIPIS, you know, Falls Church Arts is an environmental, I mean, I'm a member of every organization in the city. And I'm telling, none of them really have an environmental focus except for VIPIS, in terms of that. And then the one, she mentions the other stuff that we do, the habitat restoration, the classes we do on, you know, composting, all that kind of stuff that's in there, so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're not excluding anybody who's gonna, we're not listed.
I probably have an, and other organizations in there somewhere.
You do, I had looked at that part, and I thought you covered most of the stuff we do, I didn't say anything missing, but.
Thank you.
I did have a few things, just really quick.
Go for it.
So I like, I like the chapter, I think the text is all really great, but in the end, the part that I like is the policy actions, because, you know, after a while, you stop reading the chapter and you start going through the policy actions, and that's what we're gonna work on. There's just a couple things. I am concerned that number 10, the climate risk assessment and climate resilience plan is a medium goal. Right, which you said, so I just back you up on that. I also, I mean, I'm just saying, I was concerned about that. I was concerned that 15, the rezoned parks and paper streets is a medium goal. I don't know why we're waiting to do that, this is property we own, we should be designating them as park before some other. We've already lost pieces of it here and there, because it's kind of been sitting there in this no man's land. And so we've had people, you know, buy a little piece to say, sold pieces here, and so I think the not move forward on that, it's, that should, well, that's also on the Plan Commission, that's on our project, our list that we wanna do, our zoning list. We have a list of like Greenway Downs and some other things that we wanna work on, and that's on there. I just feel like that should be more of, that should be a short-term goal, that number 15. And then, number five, the expand the tree canopy fund of payments in lieu of plantings, include commercial properties. I, I don't know if that needs to be a short term, I think we have a problem with that in terms of, we really need the plantings more than we need. Because, because part of the problem is where do we put these other trees? And I say this as a VIPIS board member, we're starting to struggle about where we can put more trees.
Yes.
We wanna put more trees. So I'm kinda concerned that we're talking about expanding this payments in lieu of plantings, when we don't know where we would actually plant some trees using those payments. I mean, VIPIS, we're not spending all the tree money that we're generating anymore. We're, we're starting to have excess of money, because we're not spending it, because we're not being able to buy enough trees. So anyway, but we're also looking at, on the, on the VIPIS side, we're looking at maybe we should be, maybe hiring people that we could hi, put more trees in, and then people wouldn't actually have to help us dig, and maybe they'd let us, they'd take a tree if they didn't have to dig, but the whole thing. But anyway, I just wonder if that should really be a short-term goal, because I think.
I think that action came specifically from the Tree Commission, you know, they've been frustrated that the fund is, the way people can contribute to the fund is limited, and the way it can be spent is limited, so they were looking for ways to make it more flexible, so that when opportunities arise, you can take advantage of them.
Okay, I mean, I guess I see that, but I'm just saying, on the VIPIS side, we are now have excess of $15,000 of tree money, because each year, we're not spending all the tree money we're generating, so it's.
I'll never buy another cup of coffee from you guys.
But I mean, in the long run, we're hoping, you know, now we're thinking, we're trying to think of how to expand the tree program, but the biggest problem is where do you put the more trees? So, I mean, it's just, but that could be tied into.
There is an urban forest management plan in there, which could be a key way of finding out where to put the trees.
And if we ever, I mean, if we ever get the plan going to acquire flood plan property in easements, we may be able to go in and retrieve some of that with the appropriate trees for, you know, wetland. So, I mean, there is some, so that's what I'm just saying, I don't think, I understand their flexibility issue, but I don't know if money is an issue right now, in terms of trees, but.
One of the, one of the things that would be relevant in terms of setting these priorities, and I totally understand your point of view, the, we'll have an internal staff meeting at the beginning of October, where we're looking at what resources we have available and what resources, resources we'll need to meet the priorities that you're establishing, so.
Well, VIPIS wants to buy more trees. We would like to buy more trees and have them put somewhere in the city, and we like to help dig some of the holes, but maybe not all of them, so. But, and also, just on the vision, when I was reading it, I kinda thought that, like, one of the ways you could shorten it is by protect and enhance and expand in the city's natural resources and green infrastructure. And then you could drop out, increase in the use of greenhouse infrastructure, because we have some now, so we could, we should protect what we have, enhance and expand, and I think, so that would take a few more words out of there and leave you some more room to add stuff about, you know, climate change in there.
Great, thank you.
And then I also was wondering, using the latest building techniques, you know, I just wondered, should that be building in landscaping techniques, maybe even? I don't know, does building really encompass landscaping? Because, I mean, that.
Maybe I could just take the word building out.
Yeah, you, you, actually, that might make, that might make sense. Yeah, that would broaden it, because I thought building just seemed so narrow to me. But, okay, but generally, it's, the chapter looks great, and like, you can see how much work has been done, and it's really spectacular.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the attempt to be brief, let me just mirror what everybody says in terms of it looking good and being well-thought-out and comprehensive. So thank you very much, they've given you lots of suggestions, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, it's really been a team effort, you know, with planning and the Department of Public Works and the Department of Environmental Sustainability working together, and so it really has been a lot of work, but it's great to have it in good shape, thank you.
And I think as a commission, we are highly supportive of this topic, so.
I don't think, I wonder if the Plan Commission's ever been in a situation where three people came from EFC, all three of us, that's where we came from.
We have a plan.
The coup has begun.
Before we adjourn, there's one last thing, I just wanted to get out there, a green building incentive, I think, or the green building policy, I think, was a medium-term action. That is something else that I'd like to see brought to a short-term action, if we can. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you for staying late.